Good afternoon. My name is Linay Palmasano and I'm the Chair of Committee of the Whole. I'll call to order our regular committee meeting for Tuesday, December 5th. I'll note that it's our last Committee of the Whole of the year and it's a very full agenda, so at this time I'll ask the Clerk to call the roll and verify the presence of a quorum.
Counselmember Payne.
Present.
Wansley.
Present.
Rainville.
Present.
Vita.
Present.
Ellison.
Here.
Osman.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Jenkins.
Present.
Chutai.
Present.
Kosky.
Present.
Chowdhury.
Present.
Chavez.
Present.
Chair Palmasano.
Present.
There are thirteen members present.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. We have five items on our published agenda in addition to reports of committees that have met this cycle. We'll begin with our first public hearing, which is to receive and file public comment regarding appointments to our Ethical Practices Board. Those people selected are both Michael Friedman and Mark Wagner. I'll note that our official role as a council in this process is only to hold the hearing. We do not vote on these appointments. And to introduce this item, we have Assistant Attorney Susan Trammell to speak about it. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano, members of the committee. Today, the Appointing Committee for the Ethical Practices Board is bringing forward two finalists. They are here today to give a brief statement and then open for public comment. The process is such that the Ethics Code requires that the appointing panel bring forward and open a public comment period of thirty days. That period opened on the twenty-first of November with the letter that was sent to the council members and has been also posted in Finance and Commerce and also on the city's Ethical Practices Board website inviting comment. Any comment received for the thirty days will be forwarded to the Appointing Committee along with comments received today, at which time they will make their final decision as to the appointments. So today, this council's, the committee's action will be to receive and file any public comment. And I invite our first applicant, who is Mark Wagner, to appear before you and make a few comments. And then, Michael Friedman will also, an appointee who's being recommended as a reappointment, to make just a couple comments.
Thank you. I'll officially open the public hearing and invite up Mr. Mark Wagner. Welcome, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Mark Wagner. I've been a resident of Minneapolis for seventeen years, graduate of the University of Minnesota Law School, and a member of the bar in good standing for fourteen years. And I was really just looking for a way to give back a little bit to the community that I love, and I saw this opportunity advertised in one of the local bar journals, and it stood out to me as a way that I might be able to make use of some of my skills to contribute to good governance of the city, and I hope that I will be able to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman, if you'd also like to say a few words? And then we'll take anybody else that might speak, just so that people know if you're here to speak for the Ethical Practices Board, there's currently nobody signed in, so you will be up next. Welcome, Mr. Friedman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Palmasano and members of the City Council. I don't really have any prepared remarks beyond what I put in the application. I've served for two years now on the Ethical Practices Board, and it is an investment in ethical practices in the city, and the city has put forward a lot of effort in helping me to be trained and to adhere to the goals of the ethical practices as best as possible, and I've committed a substantial amount of time to that. My personal background is that I am not an attorney. I spent fifteen years as the Executive Director of the Legal Rights Center, which is a local community-founded nonprofit, and I also am currently on the Lawyers Professional Responsibility Board. I've done that for four years, and so, and quite a while ago, for a few years in the early 2000s, I was the Chair of the Zephilian Review Authority Board here in Minneapolis. And so, it's very important then when the public has some sense that something has gone wrong, and there's a mechanism that government has put forward for complaint, that there's a fair process, both for those who are making the complaint and those that the complaint is against, and it is part of my ethical duty and personal goals to do the best I can to achieve that fairness for all concerned.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Wagner, Mr. Friedman, we really appreciate your time and dedication to the city. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? I'm not seeing any, so seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the Clerk to receive and file these comments. Thank you for your time. Our second public hearing today is a consideration of the Mayor's nomination of Director Margaret Anderson Kelleher to the appointed position of City Operations Officer for a term ending January 2026. Here's how I'd like to run this. First, I'll ask the Mayor to introduce his nominee, then we'll have the public speak to that nominee. Third, we'll ask the nominee to speak if she'd like to say a few words, and then we'll have comments and conversation up here. So, I imagine the Mayor is running down the hall right now.
Yeah, there he is.
Madam Vice President, while you're waiting for the Mayor to appear, I might just point out the agenda, or points out that this is an appointment to the position of City Operations Officer, and we did include parenthetically "City Coordinator." You'll all understand and appreciate that the reason for that is because, under the city charter, it still references the City Coordinator, although the ordinance is adopted by this body to implement the new government structure referred to a City Operations Officer, so it is a concurrent appointment to the two separate positions which are merged into one, and so, just to point out that that's why it still references the position of City Coordinator.
Thank you for that clarification. Mayor Frye, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that you're calling on me, I assume we're at the point in time when we're bringing forward your nomination.
I'm asking you to introduce your nominee. Yep.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the City Council. Today is a day that we get the privilege of talking about someone who has been incessantly involved in government and community affairs for so many decades. This is a person, Margaret Anderson Kelleher, who has had at her heart a willingness to build consensus, bridge gaps, and find partnerships where they're hard to find. That is what we need right now in this city. I can give you a long soliloquy about her CV. I can tell you about all of the items on her resume that make her uniquely qualified to do this job and do it exceedingly well, but the bottom line is that right now, we need partnership in the city, and Margaret Anderson Kelleher can help bring it. She's someone that has had, just to list a few accomplishments during the time she's been at Public Works. She's led the street reconstruction in downtown in North Minneapolis in conjunction with the Upper Harbor Terminal Project. She has partnered with Hennepin County to re-envision safety and transportation needs on East Lake Street, and she has managed the overhaul of the city's stormwater tunnel system. And last year, when Minneapolis saw its third snowiest winter on record, Ms. Anderson Kelleher directed the city to open free public parking during snow emergencies to ensure that residents could store their cars safely. Throughout the snow emergencies, Ms. Anderson Kelleher went above and beyond to communicate with city staff and residents about the critical weather circumstances that we were experiencing and making sure that they got all of the information that they needed to know. Once the snow melted, of course, Public Works wasted no time in getting out there to start filling the potholes, which, by the way, we had more in 2023 than in any year in recent history. And so many of us are also familiar with the accomplishments from Margaret Anderson Kelleher far before she got to this city, including representing Minneapolis in the state legislature for twelve years, a portion of which as Speaker of the House. And it's not a coincidence that we are joined by a number of really incredible leaders from both the House and the Senate. There may be more, but at the very least, I see former Senator Jeff Hayden, Senator Scott Dibble, and Representative Frank Hornstein here with us. Their presence and their work for the city of Minneapolis and our shared constituents shows how important the work that Margaret Anderson Kelleher has been doing now for decades. And just to add a few more, she has served as the MINDOT Commissioner, leading top state infrastructure projects like Highway 14 and 12, creating safer roads for communities across the state. And then beyond her role as a public servant, she has a commitment to dedication, and dedication to our city and to our communities, of which she, by the way, is a resident. So, this is someone who I am so proud to bring forward, especially at this point in time. Members of the City Council, both brand-new and those that have been around for a term or two, we are at a critical juncture right now where we have an opportunity to start fresh. We have an opportunity to build partnerships where they've been frayed, and I believe that Margaret Anderson Kelleher is the right person to do exactly that. So I really thank you for your time. I ask for your support and your vote. And Council Vice President, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you, council members.
Thank you for these words. We had first two members of the public signed in, and then we have some others, as you mentioned, from the audience. The first is Howard Dotson, the second is Meg Tuthill, and then in this order, we have Representative Frank Hornstein, Chief Tyner, Kim Collins, Jeff Hayden, and Senator Scott Dibble. If you are here to speak on behalf of this nominee, or rather, at this public hearing, pardon me, please do make sure to sign in over there at the clerk. Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Dotson.
Mayor Frye, council members, I think I missed my calling. I should have been a cheerleader, because I've been to many of your nominations. I've watched you build a dream team, and as a son of Minneapolis, I'm so proud to see the changes that I've seen these last fifteen months. Chief O'Hara reminded us that we all went through this trauma together, and the healing and reconciliation work is still ongoing. And these last fifteen months, I've watched Margaret, she walks the talk. She has a servant's heart and she listens, and I always had confidence in what she heard she was going to follow through on. I want to thank Heather Johnston for her service. I saw her at so many key meetings, and so, the baton's being passed, but I know that the team you built and her experience and everything in front of us is going to help us get to that point where the healing and reconciliation actually can bring us to the next point. Watching the city go through this, these last three years, and seeing the team and that she can bring another dimension to it. So with the Third Precinct and the Community Safety with Judge Barnett, I'm really, I've never been so proud and hopeful for the city. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you. Next, we have, there we go, I didn't see you back there. Next, we have Meg Tuthill. Again, if you're here to speak at this public hearing, if you could please sign in over on that side of the dais. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Chair and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. First of all, I also want to thank Heather Johnston for her service to the city of Minneapolis. I had the pleasure to work with her. She was just a delight and really helped somebody who wasn't great with figures, and I'm that person. Margaret Anderson Kelleher, how the heck do I know her? We're going to start with the fact I knew her before she was married. I've known her a long time. I've known her as one of her constituents. I've known her as a colleague. I've known her as a community person. I have found her to be ethical, hardworking, and for lots of us out here that are not in government and not working, she's a listener. May not always agree with her, but she's willing to listen. And as a colleague, I found the same thing. Those things are, those qualities are really important. You can disagree, but let's listen to one another, and that's one of the things I liked the most about her. Plus the fact she's not afraid to reach out to people who know about a situation more than she does. She is more than willing to do best practices. She's more than willing to learn from other people who have gone before her. These are qualities that are so important, especially in this day and age, and as we're trying to rebuild our city. So, Mayor Frye, thank you very much for the nomination. Margaret, thank you for your willingness to serve one more time. And to all of you, I hope that you will take a serious look at her nomination, because it is for the betterment of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Representative Frank Hornstein. Just to say, after him, we'll have Chief Tyner, Deputy Commissioner Kim Collins, Jeff Hayden, Senator Dibble, and then whoever else signs in over here.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to see all of the council here. I've known Margaret Anderson Kelleher almost as long, not quite as long, as Meg Tuttle, but it was 1993, and I was an organizer for a group called Clean Water Action. I didn't know much about the Capitol, but we had a campaign to reduce mercury emissions from coal plants and garbage incinerators. And our work took us to the Capitol, and our key ally there was Representative, then Representative Gene Weginius. And Margaret was the Legislative Assistant for Representative Weginius. She helped me in ways I still value today in navigating that strange place called the Capitol. Fast forward four, ten more years, and we're both representing the same Senate district in Minneapolis. Again, she takes me under her wings, teaches me how to bring people together and work for the betterment of the community. And then, four years after that, in 2007, I get to vote for her for Speaker of the House, and that's where I really saw her skills in action. We had a diverse group of people in our caucus, urban and rural, that she was able to bring together that we could work for common goals. And then she had to deal with a Republican governor, Tim Pawlenty, and we were able to succeed in that as well, overriding his veto for a historic transportation bill, which brought money to Minneapolis for public transit and other needs. And then, 2018, I get to work with her once more as the Commissioner of Transportation. Same thing, working together, reaching common ground, bringing people from diverse perspectives to get things done in a very, very difficult environment of divided government. So for those reasons and so many more, I'm proud and I'm honored to support the nomination of Margaret Anderson Kelleher.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Chief Tyner. Chief?
Chair Palmasano, members of the committee, I am happy today to come up here and speak in favor of Margaret Anderson Kelleher becoming our next COO. I remember when I first met her, she was still the Commissioner with the state, and we had had a horrific accident on 35W. A car had ran into the, you know, bus lane thing that got there and pretty much exploded, and I got a call about 2:30 in the morning, and, you know, it said, "Chief Tyner, this is Margaret Anderson Kelleher, the Commissioner of," you know, and I need to know what happened. And at 2:30 in the morning, I was, you know, thinking, "Who? What?" Sounds familiar. But anyways, so, I described to her what had happened and what was going on and what the damages were to the infrastructure, which luckily weren't much, and I think we went on from there. Fast forward when she got here, she's really been a good partner. The Mayor mentioned a partner. She's been a good partner in the Fire Department in designing streets and thoroughways, and in at least one case, redesigning a street or thoroughway, and that's, that's something that really hasn't happened in the history of the Fire Department, for us to have that partnership with Public Works. Last year, during the second snowiest snowfalls on record going to the one-sided parking, she did that because the Fire Department asked her to do that. So, so it's been a really good partnership. I'd like to see that partnership continue. I think her resume speaks for itself, and so I'd like to speak in support of Margaret Anderson Kelleher becoming our next COO. And before I leave, I would also like to take a moment to thank Heather Johnston for her work over the years. I think she's done a great job for us, and I hope that does not go unnoticed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deputy Commissioner Kim Collins. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kim Collins, and I am a lifelong resident of the city of Minneapolis, and I also currently serve as the Deputy Commissioner at the Minnesota Department of Transportation. It is truly a privilege to be here today to speak on behalf of Director Margaret Anderson Kelleher as the next City Operations Director for Minneapolis. I'll start by saying I first met Margaret, for me, she's my former Commissioner, and so if I slip up and I refer to her as such, please forgive me. But I first met her when she joined MINDOT as the Commissioner back in 2019, and I quickly learned that we have a few things in common, but most importantly was our fondness for our fair city. As a Civil Rights Director at the time, I had a strong need for a Commissioner who understood diversity, equity, inclusion, the basis of our civil rights program, and most importantly, was willing to stand up and take a leadership role in advancing these programs. Margaret did not disappoint. It was an honor to work under her leadership, and I'd even say her mentorship. It's always wonderful when she calls me a colleague. I was most impressed with her steadiness in leading on challenging subjects. You know, she certainly shepherded the organization through the days following the killing of George Floyd and the civil unrest, which, as we all know, was a significant event for our city. When I learned that the Commissioner was resigning from MINDOT, I have to admit, I was disappointed that I would no longer have the opportunity to serve under her leadership. However, inside, I unabashedly was absolutely thrilled with excitement that she was joining the city of Minneapolis, and I knew that I would be able to depend on her soundness of leadership that would carry forward those same skills and characters of a phenomenal leader that I had experienced at MINDOT. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Hayden. I just saw him. There you are.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the City Council. It's so good to see all of you here today. My name is Jeff Hayden, and I am a former state senator, and currently I work in government relations at Frederickson, not Frederickson and Byron, just Frederickson. I don't know where Mr. Byron went to. At any rate, I'm here just to make sure that you understood my support of Margaret Anderson Kelleher as your next COO, and why. When I joined the legislature, I was elected in 2008 and started in 2009, and Margaret was the Speaker of the House. And as many of you know, if you've gone over there, that's a pretty big job and a pretty big place and pretty intimidating, and if some of the folks that are here that are new, that saying, "You're drinking water out of a fire hose or hydrant," or whatever it was, was absolutely true there. I had had some experience in working in politics as an aide to City Councilmember Gary Schiff, and spent a little time with Councilmember Goodman, and Madam President, whether it was a native, Robert Lilligren, so I just want to say that I thought that I knew what I was doing, but absolutely didn't. And so, I sat in the very back of the chamber, and often, when Margaret would come off the dais, she would come and sit in the alcoves, and she would kind of sit and kind of take us under her wing and talk to us about what was going on and why and where and how things work, and even was gracious enough to refer us, and Speaker doesn't necessarily give you bills, but she can kind of send you on your way. And so, I was able to really get some good opportunity, Senator Champion and I, now the President of Senate, working with Margaret. But with my time left, I wanted to share one anecdote with you. As Margaret transitioned to be the Chair of MINDOT, the 35W project that many of us serve and live next to, that big $300 million project was being put in, it was near and dear to my heart, because that's where my family grew up. And so, I got a call from a Baptist minister who said, "Hey, this project is ruining our church, that there's cracks in the walls, there's things happening, it's inaccessible, and we don't know who to talk to, and when we call, no one picks up the phone." And so, with that, I called Margaret, and she picked up the phone on the first ring. We had a good conversation, we brought her staff in, and needless to say, I know my time is up. We were able to rectify, help fix that church, help give it the access that it's needed so that we didn't continue to give harm to a community that had been harmed by big transportation projects. So once again, I know my time is up. I want to make sure that you know that I support, and a lot of members of the community support, Margaret in this position as Chief Executive, or Chief Operating Officer for the city of Minneapolis. Thanks again, it's good to see all of you.
Nice. Thank you very much. Next is Senator Scott Dibble, and then I'm just saying we don't have anybody else signed in, so unless that changes, you'll be our last speaker.
Well, thank you so much, Chair Palmasano, council members, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak in favor of Margaret Anderson Kelleher's nomination to be the next Operations Officer for the city of Minneapolis. My name is Scott Dibble, and I serve as a Minnesota State Senator, representing District 61, and Chair of the Transportation Committee at the Senate. It also might be of interest to you that, like Jeff Hayden, I served as a council aide to City Councilmember Dorey Mead, several times preceding Emily Kosky on the City Council in the 11th Ward. As Speaker, Representative Anderson Kelleher's leadership was essential and key in passing the then-long-needed and awaited Sustainable Funding Package of 2008, which required a bipartisan override of the Governor's veto, and it was the first time our metropolitan area finally joined its peers in passing a sustainable, stable, and growing source of funding for transit. While serving as MINDOT's leader, Commissioner Anderson Kelleher was the most progressive, thoughtful, and responsive leaders at MINDOT I have ever had the pleasure of working with. She understands how our built environment can either add to greater racial, social, and economic justice and contribute to improving our environment and climate, or it can do the exact opposite. She established the Sustainable Transportation Advisory Committee, ushering in key changes to MINDOT's policies and practices with regard to our environment and climate, key among them, reducing vehicle miles traveled, and just as important, intentionally engaging an array of external experts, community members, and stakeholders in its work and in its decision-making. As Commissioner, she worked alongside me as the then-minority lead, along with Chair Hornstein, bringing all of her skills in fostering personal relationships and finding ways for all parties to succeed. And in that bill, we advanced BRT projects, made the first-time substantial investments in active transportation, made the second Amtrak train from Chicago possible, and advanced efforts to bring the Rondo neighborhood back together. Just one more paragraph, I'll be real fast. Among the many recent legislative successes is the passage of a once-in-a-lifetime leap forward, the comprehensive, sustainable, progressive transportation package we just passed in this last session, more than half of the funding dedicated to transit and non-motorized transportation. Chair Hornstein and I asked her to come over and to help us with that bill, and she brought her considerable skill to bear in bringing stakeholders together, sometimes hard to corral stakeholders, and so the success of that bill is attributable as much to her leadership as it is to anyone. So she really did a fantastic job of reprising that leadership role that she had had before. So I appreciate your consideration of Margaret Anderson Kelleher as the Operating Officer for the city of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Dibble. While I don't think we've had any additional sign-ups, so I'll invite the nominee up to speak, and as she does get ready on the dais, I will, I'll just, I won't introduce everyone, but I just want to share with viewers that we have so many people here in the room. I see a number of Public Works staff, I presume here, in support of this transition. I see directors and deputies of many other departments, like Reg Services, the Office of Community Safety, MPD, Communications, Reg Services, and members of her family. Very important. Thank you for coming over to be here today. Director Kelleher, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano and council members. First, I want to thank these colleagues, past and present, who've come forward today to speak on my behalf. I deeply appreciate that. I deeply appreciate that. Chief Tyner, as well as Representative Hornstein, Senator Dibble, Senator Hayden, and of course, my friend and my valued colleague, Kim Collins, Deputy Commissioner at MINDOT, and Meg Tuttle and Howard Dotson, thank you for saying a few words. I want to thank Heather Johnston for her service in this role, both as Coordinator and as COO. And I also want to say that I hope these comments can go out as our employees are watching, I am sure, most certain, across the city to them as well. They're meant for all of you, but they're also meant for our residents and our people who work in Minneapolis. So I wanted to reflect on how I should begin with all of you. My last hearing was online. I think at that point, it was the longest public hearing any proposed department head had ever gone through. I think somebody else maybe has surpassed me now. But I thought it was important to reintroduce myself to all of you in a more personal way. I've been a resident of the city of Minneapolis for 34 years in January, sorry. I'm a daughter. I'm a sister. I'm a spouse. I'm a mom and a mom to two very independent, thoughtful adults. I'm a dog mom, which many of we bonded over that. I'm an artist in a number of mediums as well, and that's something you might not know about me. I've been on my neighborhood board. I served as a community organizer. You've heard I was a state representative, a leader in the legislature, a leader at a nonprofit, a leader in the state as a commissioner, and most recently proudly as an employee of the city of Minneapolis. I have a master's degree in public administration. Sometimes we don't talk about that, but I want to share that with you. My areas of interest were budgeting, conflict resolution, both mediation and negotiation, as well as studying system dynamics. I'm a breast cancer survivor. I love the outdoors. I love to walk, run slowly, kind of like a turtle. I like to cross-country ski on the easy course, and I love to fish. I will bring all of my lived experiences to this job. I want to thank each of you as council members. You have given me your time, and I know that many of you will be giving me more time out of your valuable day to have conversations. And not just the time, but the attention you spent with me to talk about what you hope for the role of COO in the city. I appreciate your desire to serve your ward and the residents of your ward, and we share that. That's my driving force, is to be able to deliver for our residents, our visitors, people who are temporarily in our city, to make sure we are doing this work excellently. I've dedicated my entire life to public service. Over the years, I've continued to and have chosen to stay in this arena. And I can wholeheartedly tell you that I love working at the city of Minneapolis. I've been here for less than two years, but that enthusiasm that I have for our work is a feeling that I just can't shake, and I hope I never shake that feeling. In our conversations, I heard from all of you. I heard themes of the work we can do together to improve the life for people in Minneapolis. The work to be able to reset relationships. The work to be able to get very specific about cross-collaboration between the Office of Public Service and the Office of Community Safety and working with Commissioner Barnett and his team. We have hard work to do ahead of us. The agreement with MDHR, the future settlement agreement with the federal government, it'll take all of us working on these issues across these two departments. After the council had approved the changes to government structure last fall, I want to note, we're one year into this. We're really one year into fully trying on and fitting into this new suit of clothes we have. And there have been ups and downs to that. We've had to navigate change. Sometimes we've done it together. Sometimes it feels a little apart. I think we can do better together. When we reflect on what we're dealing with, we're dealing with over 100 years of processes, 100 years of ways that people were working. And so to be able to make culture change, it's going to take a lot. And that came through in our conversations, that we need continued culture change within the city of Minneapolis. I'm wholeheartedly committed to that culture change. The COO, as a leader, has hard work ahead as well. And my vision for this role as COO in this time is kind of two parts, two big parts. Operational excellence, as well as making sure our work culture and values are strengthened and come through. We need to make sure that culture is anti-racist, anti-sexist. We have to commit to those goals every single day. And that will help our very talented staff who's already here and hopefully those we attract into the future excel at their work on behalf of residents. As I noted before in our conversations, we also have, in my conversation with both the mayor, thank you, Mayor Frye for the nomination, as well as conversations with individual council members, I've already diagnosed some of the things we have to be working on together. Overhauling community engagement at every level of this city enterprise, so our residents are more included, and so everyone can be heard. Being able to, again, reset that relationship between the legislative and executive branches, and I think importantly, improvements to budgeting our human resource systems. We have an excellent leader there. We need to listen to that leader, but we also need to keep pushing reform. And I want to share that my experience, you heard a little bit about it, serving in a legislative body, I think gives me a unique perspective. I have sat, not exactly in your chair as council members, but I have sat in an elected chair, and I understand the pressures that that brings. I understand the need to deliver on behalf of people of your ward and people of the city. And I will honor that in this role as an appointed position. But I can't do it alone, and I do ask for your rededication. Most of you are returning, and we'll have another council member soon to join you. You're a pro already. And being able to really, I think I can provide the ability to help coach and encourage our team in the Office of Public Service, to understand positions, move and look at the interests, and move ideas and action forward. We're all here for the same reason, I believe, from talking to you. We are here for Minneapolis. We are here for residents of Minneapolis. There are challenges ahead, and I know that. We can work through them ultimately. I went back to someone that I have connected to all of my life, and that was Paul Wellstone. He was one of my mentors. And I think his words sum it up better than any I could write for you today. Politics is about the improvement of people's lives. It's about advancing the cause of peace and justice in our country and around the world. And politics is about doing well for people. That's my commitment. We're going to do well for people together. Let's work together, let's work together on behalf of the people and the lives that we can help build here in Minneapolis. I'd be honored to have your support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to formally close the public hearing and ask if my colleagues have any comments or questions for Director Kelleher. I'm not seeing any. Sorry, should I be seeing any? Here. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to all the speakers that spoke on behalf of the nomination of Ms. Anderson Kelleher. And, you know, I have been working with Margaret, as she has been referred to today, for many, many years, and has always appreciated her willingness to listen, her strategic thought process when the mayor nominated her for the Director of Public Works. I was really thrilled to support that nomination because I thought it would bring stability to our leadership team here at the city. And I believe that this nomination for COO will further elevate that stability to the city and to our leadership team. And so thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this nomination, and thank you, Ms. Anderson Kelleher, for being willing to accept this role if approved today.
Thank you. Councilmember Kosky?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I don't have a question, not yet. But, you know, here's the truth, that I have been secretly interviewing Margaret Anderson Kelleher since the very first day that she got here. And so I'm very grateful to see this nomination today. And I have had the honor to be the Vice Chair and then the Chair of Public Works, so have been able to work in this, my first term, be mentored, supported, and had strong collaborations with her as the Director of Public Works. And so here are a few things that I learned in our work together. She strives for partnership and collaboration. She's a strong communicator. I heard this already, she listens. And she finds shared understanding. And because of these, and we've heard dozens of other accolades here today, I am proud to support you for this role as our next city COO. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ringville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be voting for this, so thank you so much for your willingness to serve, Margaret. Thank you for your willingness to listen to all sides of a story. Thank you for your willingness to communicate. You go above and beyond, and we heard that example of the snow emergency, the terrible conditions we had, but you responded to that. And I was especially proud to hear the chief, the fighter chief, talk about your willingness to listen to the firemen and adjust the road, the road parking. Thank you for your willingness to protect the city's interests when dealing with other forms of government. We are not an island here in the city of Minneapolis. It's heartening to see the state officials here, but you get along with the county officials, you get along with the federal officials, and that's so important. And most of all, I want to thank you for your positive attitude. You walked down the hallway with a smile on your face. Even when you said no to me, you smiled at me. And you do say no quite a bit, maybe more than you should, but I'm throwing that out the window right now. And I look forward to voting for you for this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chagti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Anderson Kelleher, I have a series of questions for you, so if you'll come on up. I will start with, you know, it isn't a secret that we have a culture problem here at the city of Minneapolis. And that culture problem includes our employees bringing to our attention issues with racism and sexism in the workplace. I know that's something that we would like to see change. I know that's something you're committed to. So can you help me understand, in this role, what you hope to do to address racism and sexism in the workplace?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Councilmember Chagti, first of all, thank you for all the conversations about this and the many other things we've had. Culture change is hard in any place, and particularly, I think it's even compounded here by our change in government structure that voters voted for and we are supporting. And so I think that has brought out in life, and there's other factors as well, that we have a real opportunity to both work with our department heads and deputies through programs like Metamorphosis, which I do think is valuable. I also know that the way we have culture change is to really embed this work throughout the organization. And so that's where the important work of Prince Corbett and as Director of REIB is so critical to me, not just me personally, but me professionally, as well as other employees who really look forward to working together with REIB to create that curriculum that all employees can take in, to wrestle with, and hopefully we really can root out racism, sexism, gender discrimination. We must. We have to be reflective of our city, and that's our imperative. And so to do that, we have to invest in not only the contract work that we're doing and the programs, but really develop that work inside our organization, REIB, HR, and the others who will be involved.
Thank you. You referenced the new government structure, and I think that leads very well into my next question. You know, we're all navigating what this new government structure looks like and what it means for us as policymakers and as decision-makers, working together to improve outcomes for the residents that we collectively serve. A part of that equation is how we, as policymakers, communicate with the administration and how we work together to solve really big and complex problems. Can you talk to me a little bit about your vision for what communicating and working with the council in this new role looks like?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Chagti, and I believe almost every single person who I've spoken to on the council has talked about this very issue of, and that is what I mean by, I think we need a reset in how we are sharing information back and forth, how we are working on shared problems together, especially the hardest problems. There is absolutely no doubt, we need everyone. And all of your ability to be in regular dialogue with your constituents is an important, important piece of solving those problems. Because we can't get there without that voice in the room, whether it's a smaller issue or one of our much larger issues, being able to bring that forward. I also think, you know, the mayor and I've had conversations about this. I can't be true to myself if I'm not working with all of you, as well as the mayor, his executive team, as well as the Office of Community Safety and the City Attorney's Office. These offices working together in a really productive way, I can't be true to myself if I'm not doing that. And so regular meetings are going to be part and parcel of this, but it's got to be more than that. It's also got to be that shared problem solving, and how do we create the space to be able to do that across the legislative and executive? And I think we can do that. I believe we can do that.
Thank you. And, you know, I think disagreement is inherent to good policymaking. Having, wrestling through difficult things is how we get to the best possible outcome. And I think, I think in this new role, I would love to hear a little bit more about what you, how you see yourself navigating disagreement between the legislative and executive branch. the legislative and executive branches, and, and in scenarios when, when temperatures are high. What, what do you see as your role in, in helping us move through that and get to, get to a, a productive solution?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Chagti, councilmembers, first it starts with me. And I will say, I can sometimes be fiery, too. So keeping my own self-control and temperature. In graduate school, I learned this terrific, and you're going to think you learned that in graduate school, what? But it, it was a, it was actually a course taught at, at the law school, in the school I went to, about emotions, and emotions in negotiation. And, you know, for a long time, negotiations were taught as if they were devoid of emotion, right? It was all clinical. That's just, that doesn't work. We're human. We have emotion. And so learning how to understand myself in that moment, I think will help me, help others understand themselves in that moment, and be able to, you're right, conflict is inherent to this. You wouldn't exist if there weren't conflicts between people or businesses or neighbors. And so we just have to find a better way to get through that conflict, whether it's a small one or a big one. And also have the grace to say I'm sorry when we screw it up, which I believe I've said to most of you, and I know I've said to our residents from time to time. We also have to have the humility to know that we don't have all the answers ourself, and we're stronger together. And that's what I think the beauty of this structure can be, is that we have really talented, talented public servants who want to contribute. They want to have interaction with all of you as well. And so I think that that's where it starts. But it's, it starts very personally for me. I grew up in a scrappy household. My four older brothers, I, I have a sister as well, but my four older brothers are 14 to 20 years older than me. I grew up on a dairy farm. And whether, I'm most certain I didn't learn good conflict resolution skills back then. I did learn how to stand up for myself, because I had to. And I've, all my life, been trying to blend those two things together, that feisty fiery side with the ability to listen and take it all in, because when you're in that situation, you're a little sponge. And I want to make sure that going forward, we can have good working relationships based on that philosophy of, people are going to be passionate about the things they know about, but we also have to be respectful of all of you.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have for you, Director. My final question is for, for Mayor Frye, if you will. This is, Director Anderson Kelleher is exceptionally qualified, and, and no one can question her credentials. So this is not about her particularly. This is about, my question is around the, the national search process that we went through. I know national searches are an incredibly expensive avenue to explore as well. And, and I know that there are a couple of council members here who served on, on the, on the interview team as we completed the national search process for the, the next COO. I'm just wondering if you can speak to, you know, your thinking and reasoning behind nominating someone who, who did not go through that process that, that was important to you and to all of us as well?
Madam Vice Chair, Councilmember Chagti, yes, I'll consent to the question, and I appreciate it, and it's a fair one. We have been through a number of national searches for the role of either Coordinator and/or Chief Operating Officer over the last several years. It's a tough job. And so we went through a process. At the end of that process, I was intent on choosing Heather Johnston. Heather is an incredible public servant herself, and I again want to thank her for all of her work. Heather decided that she wanted to take her life trajectory elsewhere, a decision that I deeply respect, and it's a decision that is hers to make. Given that we had been through a number of national searches, and given that we have someone of Margaret Anderson Kelleher's caliber right in front of us that has been doing the work, that is really adept at forging these deep partnerships, I felt that she was the right person at the right time. And so rather than go through another national search, when I was confident that Margaret Anderson Kelleher was the right person, I chose her and put her name forward.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman?
Thank you so much, Council Vice President. It's great to hear from many leaders in, in this room to say great things about Director Margaret Kelleher. That says a lot for your commitment, a long commitment to public service, and really appreciate your voices. I have voted for you 2022 on February on your nomination, but you and me had a conversation. My experience with Public Works under your leadership has not been great regarding Carmel Mall parking, unloading zones, one-sided parking on the snow emergency we had on our most density community neighborhood in Minneapolis. Feel like many things were not considered, and that's what I continue to advocate regarding that cultural aspect of it, and thinking about how important it is for some communities that they are, they should be looked at, not the same brush as every community in Minneapolis. I represent a very unique community that regards different cultural way of looking at it. One of the things we talked about, you and me and I have continued to advocate, is that Carmel Mall, when I brought my opinion and what the community think, and the communities that have came here, had a conversation with the mayor's office, wrote a lot of petitions saying that the meter parking that Public Works continue to enforce and not listen to the community is not working for them. As a council member, where I came to you, I felt like I was not listened to. Felt like I was told that is how things work, and I was really disappointed from that. You have to know that the community I represent, I'm their only voice. They're not privileged to advocate themselves. They're not privileged to speak the language, to understand how operations work and city Minneapolis work. We, I can't. My point is that same brush of city services and how we do things might not work for some communities. And I think an electoral official who represents them has a voice and has, should be considered when issues come up. In my experience, as we talked about, government structure has not been great. I feel like sometimes I don't have the answers for my residents. I am their electoral official, but regarding encampments, issues in my word, you know that, and everyone know that, we make the ordinance, but we cannot act on it. It's up to the mayor. So for me, in this office, operation officer is very important for my office and for my resident to say, we want someone in this leadership to work with us and to hear our side and what we're saying. I know sometimes politics get into things, but basic services in our city shouldn't. I'd like to say that if you are, are approved and move forward, I would love to work with you. I want you succeed in your position. But I really want you to know that city Minneapolis is a very diverse community. And what works for uptown and downtown might not work in Ward 6, might not work in Carmel Mall and others. All I'm asking is that we want to do something good for our community as electoral officials, and we want the city leaders to listen to us to improve the lives of our residents. I just want to make that comment. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Thank you, Director Anderson Kelleher, for your words. I did want to call you up to ask a question, if that's all right. And I think it is related to some of the things that Councilmember Osman touched on, and some of the things that you and I discussed, and I really appreciated the time that you've taken to speak with me, along with members on this body. I think it serves us all to have this form of collaboration in deliberating on your nomination. It means a lot. And you mentioned it in your remarks, an overhaul and a community engagement. I think residents across our city, residents in Ward 12, residents in Ward 9, South Side, North Side, across the board, have felt that the city could engage with them better or empower them more in conversations. And I think a struggle point that I have seen with government structure change is that in figuring out our lanes, council members need to figure out how they can represent the vision of their community and bring it forward. For me, it feels really incumbent on me that I'm coming in being sent by 34,000 residents in Ward 12, and I've heard their stories, I've heard their concerns in the same way other council members have. And a big part of my job is to be able to bring their vision to this table and have it show up in what we deliver at City Hall. And I just would love to hear you speak on what your vision for that is and what your vision for overhauling community engagement looks like.
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Chowdhury, thank you for the conversations that we've had already, and all council members on the issue of community engagement. I believe this is one of the areas that we have to really look seriously at where we've been, our failures in community engagement, and our some successes in community engagement, but we need more consistent community engagement that's going to give the real, I think, the results that people want to see, which is to be heard first and foremost, to take in good ideas when they come forward. And I believe being able to really create some sort of community engagement playbook that can be used by every single department in this enterprise with their specific ingredients put into it. Because frankly, right now, we do a lot of different things in terms of community engagement in the city, and some of it has really missed the mark. Other pieces of it, people do feel heard, and I think that that is one of those first 18-month pieces of work that is top of my mind. I, I believe I heard it from almost everyone, that community engagement needs to be improved in the city, and I am committed to that. We will have a new deputy here soon, who, she comes from a, a place of having a lot of experience, both in high-profile stressful situations, as well as working with very different communities across the place she's coming from. I'm excited for that, to work with her. And I think this is a place that we can have success to reform our own community engagement process.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I just, one follow-up on that, if that's all right. For me, I, I understand that from Ward 12 residents themselves, they come from a very privileged part of the city and want to be in strong allyship to wards that have a concentration of Black, Brown, immigrant, working residents. And I think the places where we have fallen the most short in community engagement are the places where Black, Brown, immigrant, indigenous residents needed that empowerment to be a part of the community process. I'd love to hear you speak to how specifically you would support the engagement of those communities in our city, so we can move away from continuing the legacy of disparities and disenfranchisement that we've had there.
Madam Chair and councilmembers, I really think this is, there's kind of twofold. One is strengthening our relationships within the community as a city enterprise, two, the leaders of community, but then the second part is using different methods as well to get directly to people. And I think that what we do know about good community engagement is it has to speak to people where they are at, and it has to come to them. Community, members of the community often have a lot of barriers to coming to a council meeting like this, or coming to some formal committee meeting. And so taking out our community engagement into the community in multiple ways, whether it's trying to get more young people's voices heard in our process, or if it's particular communities, communities of color who have historically been disenfranchised, we need to find ways to empower community to have their voice heard. And so I don't have every answer right now about what does it look like. I just know that there are better models than what we have been doing. And we're going to all have to go through a process of dissecting what we've done, honoring and owning what we've done in the past, and building something new together, for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I don't have any questions. I'm just going to make a few comments. You know, I wanted to echo a lot of the sentiment of my colleagues. I believe Councilmember Chagti mentioned that you were the most qualified person that, that, that we could hope to have in this role, and so I want to thank the mayor for your nomination, and I want to thank you for your conversation. And I will be supporting you today. And I know that there have been a lot of conversations, I know you've had a lot of conversations with colleagues, you and I were able to have a conversation, and I think that we're in this moment, especially with regards to government structure, and we all get, you know, in, in some sense, we're all kind of new council, we're all, only have two years under our belt, because under government structure, we're all sort of relearning the institution. And, and I appreciate the ways in which you've shown up and been willing to have hard conversations. I think there's a tremendous opportunity for us to figure out how we're working together as an enterprise and as, as a city and as a body. That being said, you know, we're, we're, we're sort of still in the growing pains of that, right? We're going to face disagreements. We're going to, you know, I've, I know that there are folks on this dais who've got legitimate reasons for why they might not support you. And there are folks on this dais who have legitimate reasons for why they do support you, and I count myself among them. And so in that, you know, I just want to continue to urge you, I want to continue to urge the mayor, that as we face and wade through disagreement, that we continue this tone of working well with one another, of not taking out, you know, vendettas against one another. I'm not speaking to you directly, Margaret, I hope you understand what I'm getting at. But if I didn't think you were capable of sort of holding yourself to that higher, that higher ethic, that higher standard, then I'd probably be facing a different sort of set of, set of, set of decisions here. It's because I, it's because of not only your long resume, but also because of the ways in which I see you show up as, as a, as a unifier, not somebody who's going to do everything that Councilmember Ringville asked you to do. I'm just messing with you. But as somebody who is, you know, who, who is going to make sure that you, that you do listen, that you've heard on this dais that there are council members that, that feel the opposite, they've had that opposite experience, but I trust you to, to mediate that, to, to rectify that, and to build bridges on this dais and, along this third floor. and to build bridges on this dais and along this third floor here. So thank you for your service that you've given, you know, over the course of your whole life, of course. That doesn't even begin to adequately state it. But thank you for that service and thank you for your service to the city. And we'll continue to push each other and disagree with one another and debate and argue and hopefully come to consensus at those really critical moments. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you Chair Palmasano, thank you Director Anderson Kelleher. I do have one question. Before I begin, I did want to say that part of this role is going to be critical in addressing the culture within the city enterprise, one that many of our city employees have pointed out that can be racist and toxic, something that your position is going to have to tackle head-on. I know you answered this previously, so I'm not going to ask you directly that question. But knowing the history within this office, part of that is going to be addressing a racist and toxic culture that many of our city employees have pointed out. Now, part of the role of the Office of Public Service is overseeing the Health Department, something that is really important to many of our residents in the green zones. I do want to hear your vision for the green zones, particularly in East Phillips, in addressing pollution in our neighborhoods.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Chavez, thank you for that question. You know, it's one of those things that I was thinking back when we were talking just yesterday about the South Side Green Zone. And I'm pretty sure I was there when both South Side and North Side Green Zone were created through legislation. And there was a reason it was created, both were created. And that is because the two communities represent communities that historically have been disempowered, don't have necessarily always the means to be involved, and also had legacy industrial uses that I think we now see as incompatible with a vibrant, green city. And so knowing that history and having heard, you know, former Representative Karen Clark talk about that passion. We talked about this yesterday, my nephew lived in the Arsenic Triangle. His lawn was removed, just like so many others. And so knowing that history, we must work very hard to see those industrial uses, not that they don't have a home somewhere in the state of Minnesota, because some of them do do important work. I just don't think those uses are necessarily compatible with our vision of the green zones. And so, working very hard with you, working very hard with your colleagues, working with the state legislature, working hopefully with the governor's administration to figure out that way that we go forward where really those micro pollutants are not going to continue to harm people as well as macro pollutants.
Thank you.
Are you through, Councilmember? Councilmember Payne.
Thank you Vice President Palmasano. I've been trying to approach this appointment from a number of different lenses. Maybe kind of like some concentric search rules, right? Like, system, what's the process, what's the role? And then ultimately, who's the person that's going to be filling that role? And then you can even go in even another layer of the professional and the personal, right? And we share some pretty intense shared personal experiences. And I feel a deep connection with you for that alone, honestly. But I want to step back in my role as a council member and recognize that I'm a part of a system and I have a role within the system. And that role I take very seriously. And I put that above other things, sometimes even to a detriment perhaps. And as I think about this role, I can't separate out the personal sometimes because, you know, you will be the fifth coordinator now slash COO since I've joined City Hall in 2016 as a contractor. And part of my personal journey towards filling that role is one that I think is a shared personal story for you, being the first or sometimes the only or sometimes the first and only in a lot of your professional spaces. And, you know, I moved here from Milwaukee to go to University of Minnesota. I did an engineering degree, I would be the only black person in my classes, right? I went to grad school, I would be the only black person in my classes. My first job out of college, I was the only black person that worked in the factory. And in fact, that was the truth of my professional career until I arrived at the city. And it was the very first time that I ever had a black manager and predominantly black coworkers. And it was actually a really meaningful life experience for me. And so, you know, I'm in this kind of system role, but my personal path towards getting here was because of the reality of being a black man working in City Hall and there being some very real racist experiences. And in fact, the reason I'm a council member is because I was a contractor. And when we were trying to navigate as a team these racist experiences, there was these determinations of should we be reporting to HR? Should we be filing lawsuits? And I just didn't think I had to claim one way or another, other than I guess I'll just run for council. So that's the personal journey that's brought me to this decision that we're making today. But I'm trying to step back from that, like, really intense personal experience and really think about this, about what is the role? What is the system that this role is operating within? And one of the really critically important functions is around culture so that other people don't have these types of personal experiences like I had. And I have to be completely transparent that I was struggling with this because I sat on the COO panel, I got to meet all of those national candidates. You weren't included in that, right? And, you know, I'm arriving at this decision by way of an election outcome with what feels like a forced and rushed nomination. Outside of what we had was a formal process that was bringing credibility to it. And we talked about this when we first met one-on-one. And I've been really kind of waxing and waning with my decision. I think Councilmember Chik-Tide did a really great job of just like, at the personal-professional level, like, there's, like, you can't go to a lab and come up with somebody who's more experienced and more prepared for this role, right? And at the same time, you are arriving at this nomination with a context, with a context that's really challenging on a personal level for me to navigate. And so, you know, I had a conversation with the mayor last night, he called me. And my honest answer with him was, I don't know. I'm not a yes, but I'm not a no. I just need to have more conversations. We were able to have a really frank conversation over lunch today. And I said I wanted to have a follow-up conversation with the mayor before I could arrive where I needed to arrive. And we haven't had the time to do that. And so I want to propose forwarding this without recommendation so that we can make time and space for those conversations. And so I'm making a formal motion to forward without recommendation so that we can have those follow-ups.
Second. All right, that motion has been forwarded and seconded. Councilmember Payne, do you have other words or are you done with your remarks?
I think that, this is actually one of those really hard, challenging things, right? Because we, and I also shared that I was concerned that we wouldn't have a Public Works leader as well. And you brought a lot of stability to that. And I'm looking at some deputies over there who are imagining the days when they were dual interims and probably thinking about what that's like going forward. And those were some of the other things that I had on my mind as well. But I think come Thursday, we can have some of the conversations necessary and I'll be following up with you, Mayor, for that conversation.
All right, Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start by saying thank you Director Anderson Kelleher for not applying for a job along with your boss. That actually speaks volumes to me that you are definitely capable of this position, but it speaks to your collaboration efforts in whom I know you to be. So I originally met you in 2007 when I was advocating for freedom to breathe. And I believe you were speaker at that time. And I was at the Capitol and it was super crowded. There was a lot of, like, stuff going back and forth with freedom to breathe. And you were just masterful. I can remember, and I tell you all the time, in '07 when I just started doing a lot of advocacy work, I really looked up to you because you knew how to garner bipartisan support like none other. I mean, it really was a big deal to have votes on the other side and to have support from a Republican governor. And all of these things that none of us as advocates had accounted for when it came to the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act. One of the big things was, we were told that we were going to end the hospitality industry as we knew it, that if we stopped, Senator Dibble is shaking his head because he was there too. We were told, and I was told personally, this is the beginning and the end of your career, Ms. Vitale. You want this to be the big thing. And I remember you just really giving the entire group the confidence in saying, I feel good about this, I think you all should really keep pushing. Will you have to make some adjustments to some things? You will, but you should keep doing it. And so you were, you were really a big light for me because I had never seen a woman in the position that you were in. And I had never seen a woman pushed back in a way like you had done in politics in that moment, at that time. And so I've shared that story with you many times, I'm forever grateful for you. And then later on, I found out that we both loved Aridale terriers and that just made it even better for the both of us. And so our love of dogs, our love of clean air, you know, all the work that you did for the environment has always meant a lot to me because I've always represented an underserved community that was most impacted by a lot of the work that you and others have done. So I appreciate what you've done. I was happy to vote for you two years ago. I've told you lots of times also, when the mayor nominated you, I thought Margaret will bring a level of humanity to Public Works that I don't feel connected to, you know, something different. Because Public Works is tough and it can feel like, you know, you're just like screaming at a brick wall. I share some of Councilmember Osman's frustrations. And I will also say, I've had my best fights with Margaret and my worst fights with Margaret. And it sounds like a lot of my colleagues have too. And Councilmember Rainville says you should say no less. And you and I have argued about you saying no less to me. And I think you heard me. We had a great meeting just this week where we talked through some specific things about the North Side. The North Side is where I represent, who I love. And I always feel like as the Ward 4 council member, my word gets lost in Ward 5. People think of West Broadway when they think of the North Side, but that's a very small part. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ellison. But, you know, it's hard for me, it's a challenge. That's a very small part of the North Side, but that's what people think of, right? And that's not Ward 4. And so we've had conversations, you know, about how you're going to address the issues of Ward 4, which are very different issues than Ward 5 at times. And you've also, you know, I've called you in the middle of the night and talked about a pothole and you drove over to look at the actual pothole and, you know, to work on it. You, when we had that water line break, that was crucial. That was a big deal in this city. And we needed you to manage all those complexities. We needed you to be the face of what was happening in this community. And you did a solid job at communicating with residents, with council members about what was happening. People were afraid of what was happening. There was a lot of rumors going around about water. The Flint water crisis came up so many times and you did a great job at managing questions, concerns, even dropped off water to residents' homes who were out of water over time. So thank you so much for all of that. I mean, I really, I'm really looking forward to the work that we can do together. I didn't know that we would be in this place. You know, I want to also thank interim COO Johnston for the work that she's put in over these couple of years. She's another one that walks the streets of the North Side when I ask to see what's going on, when I ask for something. And so I'm looking forward to working with you in that way, more trips with us and the dogs. You didn't get an Aridale this time, but I accept that you got a different terrier breed. So I'm looking forward to us walking on the North Side, really looking at some of the upcoming projects like Upper Harbor Terminal and, you know, a lot of the challenges I have in the ward that I've spoke with you about. And so I am definitely going to be supporting you. And I appreciate you stepping up at this time in this city to help. Thank you.
Thank you. We have four more of my colleagues in queue and I just want to remind everybody that we have a very considered and long agenda after this. So if you need to take a turn to take care of yourself here, please do so. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you Council Vice President. Several of my colleagues have already brought the fact about the public hearing where I know I also had asked Mayor Frye if he would commit to a national search. And as Councilmember Payne highlighted, from my understanding, that search had got kicked off early this summer, yet council received no updates around what happened with that process. It does seem like, from what I'm hearing on the dais right now, that it had attracted some strong candidates. But again, council never received any updates on how we got to this place where we are being asked to consider and approve an internal hire. And nevertheless, you know, Director Anderson Keller, I would like to say since your appointment early last year, I have enjoyed working with you. You have been fairly responsive to concerns that I've raised, especially regards around constituent concerns. You were very responsive when the chicanes were needed and Lone Fellow around Bracket Park. So it's been a very fruitful relationship in working with you and the rest of the Public Works staff. That being said, and some of my colleagues have also talked about this, I think it's important to center the fact that this role will be one of the most powerful positions in City Hall and has as well as will possess a great deal of power to help our city accomplish substantial transformations in the areas of racial equity, climate resiliency, public safety beyond policing and good governance. And our city, I think all my colleagues can agree, that our city is in desperate, in dire need of leadership that will rise to the occasion, especially since we're experiencing record-low levels of confidence and credibility amongst the public. So with that in mind, I want to raise three examples that do make me a bit concerned about your ability to accomplish those things. I want to start off with the appointment process of interim COO Heather Johnson. Last year during a public hearing for Johnston, as some of my council colleagues raised, this body and the public, during a public hearing, heard from over 60 existing and former city employees about their experience in having to work in a toxic racist culture under her particular leadership at that time in the city coordinator's office. Those staff members took a huge risk with going public about their experiences. And I don't think anyone can question the courage it took for them to come forward and speak out. While I was jarred, you know, by their testimony, I was not completely shocked because I think many of us are aware about the racial disparities that exist outside of City Hall, absolutely exists within it as well. But what did surprise me is, you know, was the spite, workers in departments from throughout the city standing together and asking for, as you even highlighted- the city standing together and asking for, as you even highlighted, a better anti-racist leadership, several department heads, including yourself, submitted a letter to council basically asking us to set aside that testimony and appoint Heather Johnson anyways. And it was difficult for me to see you and other department heads who also witnessed the same testimony that we did and see our staff have to recount the trauma that they experienced here and simply request that we ignore that. And to me, the willingness, willingness in that moment to ignore or, or just not uplift those impacted by systemic racism, that does feel like a disqualifier for me for the chief operating officer position. It makes me concerned, again, about how you will rise to meet this moment where, you know, people are looking to us to be unflinching in our honesty and deliver on systemic change, especially around racism. In the last decade, Minneapolis, we were a leader at the nationwide level, at the state level, around workers' rights, tenant protections, investments in transit infrastructure. I'm pretty sure you're aware of that. But in the last few years, the city is no longer seen as a leader or a trailblazer in innovative and progressive policy, and this has been demonstrated by talented, great staff leaving the city en masse and the struggle to implement and enforce existing policies that our communities have asked us to bring forward. But with that said, I do wanna switch gears to Hennepin Ave as well. Your decisions regarding twenty-four seven bus lanes or Hennepin Ave mean for my residents that transit users feel like they will not be prioritized in favor of car-centric infrastructure on diverse and cultural corridors. Prior to my time in City Hall, I know many of my constituents participated in helping shape the transportation, transportation action plan, TAP. And they really worked to make sure public transportation was included in that. And, you know, with how you navigated Hennepin Ave, my, many of my constituents are concerned, are we gonna remain committed to our goals of expanding and funding public transportation, especially in our street redesigns and reconstruction projects? The last example that I also wanna name is the East Philip Urban Farm. I just wanna point out, like, point lightly, like, Director Anderson Kelleher, you were on the wrong side of that issue. And, you know, that was a moment where we could've demonstrated as a city, under your leadership, that we are committed to racial equity, that we are committed to the green zones, that we are honoring the commitment that we made when we declare racism as a public health emergency. And many of our residents organized for ten years to ask the city to get behind their vision of a process where we can do that reparative environmental justice, and you didn't show up in that moment for those residents too. And seeing the ways in which you haven't been responsive to the moments where we could've advanced racial, environmental, and transit equity, both within and outside of City Hall, makes me concerned about how you're gonna show up for other upcoming sensitive projects like the Community Safety Center, the Third Precinct, and three thousand Minneapolis redevelopment efforts. In the next year, we're gonna be taking on a lot more other projects, from supporting rental protection, supporting unhoused residents with strategies outside of evictions. And the role of the COO impacts residents too much for me to vote confidently yesterday. But outside of that, I look forward to working with you regardless of the outcome, because our residents' needs is the most thing that is important in this work. So, I look forward to doing like what we've been doing for the past two years and figuring out how we can create deliverables for working class people in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Charordi.
Director Anderson Kelleher, I again wanna just thank you for taking the time and accepting the nomination. I see a lot of your story in my own, being a staffer turned elected and being a public servant at heart, and how you really, I think, do your best to serve the people of Minneapolis first. I want to thank my colleagues here on the dais and Councilmember Wonsley for laying out a lot of that context that we're talking about in this nomination of this position and how much weight that we all understand this position has. We're in a moment where we are a part of proving if we can build a trustable and functional government, local government, and our residents are waiting for us to prove that, and that's, this is one of the big first steps that we're doing going into next year, is determining if we can prove that. And I appreciated your acknowledgement of failure. I think that is really important to talk about the ways in which the city has failed, where individuals and the enterprise have failed, or we've collectively failed in order to learn from mistakes and not repeat them. So, I appreciate that. And I am looking forward to the opportunity of us figuring out how we can build a really strong partnership between this position and this council with the administration, with the mayor. This is truly the mandate before us and the mandate that I was sent in here and dropped in early into this council to be a part of. It is not lost on me that this is the first nomination that I'm voting on, and I've wanted to be very thoughtful and intentional about the vote that I will take. And I acknowledge and know that I am one member of this body, and I understand that there are many colleagues on this body that would like to take some time to really consider what we have heard from community members who have spoken, our partners in other levels of government, and our own staff and your remarks, and this great discussion that we've had today. And it's really important to me that we take this step together, and that's why I seconded Councilmember Payne's motion to move forward without recommendation. I think this allows us to do the really good work of starting to build that trust, starting to bring, build that function, and starting to build that partnership. So, I just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to speak really quickly on why I, I, I want us to move together as a council. Not that we're gonna be a unanimous vote, no matter what, but I do want us to move together as a council. We've got a process here that has been at least a little bit fast-forwarded, and I think that, and we, and we are just coming out of a really grueling budget season. We've got council members who are sworn in ahead of schedule, and we've got council members who are not sure, who are asking for two more days to have follow-up conversations. I think it's, I think it's a reasonable request. Obviously, people know where I stand on this issue. You know, when we, when we vote, whether it's today or on Thursday, I'll be voting in favor to, to confirm you, and I think that that's where a lot of folks are. But I wanted to speak to why I felt like, if my colleagues feel that they need a few days, I'm asking the rest of my colleagues to honor that request, as opposed for us to take a very disjointed vote, and then we're, we're, we're trying to recollect until Thursday. You still have my support. I think you have, I think, I, I'm not necessarily counting the votes up here, but I think you have a majority of this body's support. I think it's reasonable for a handful of our colleagues to have a few more days, to have their follow-up meetings, and for us to take this up definitively on Thursday. So, I just wanted to speak in favor of that motion, despite the fact that I, you know, I myself am prepared to, to vote today.
Councilmember Chugtai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to just quickly speak to the motion to forward this, forward this nomination to Thursday's council meeting for final action without a recommendation today. I, I have, I have had a number of conversations with the director, along with a few colleagues here, and have feel, I, I feel really, really good about the path forward. I feel really good about the vote that, that I'm gonna take on Thursday, and I would just like some time to be able to follow up with, with constituents who have had conversations with me since the nomination was made. As Councilmember Ellison noted, this is our busiest time of year. We are, you know, we're gonna meet again in a few hours and, and take up the final public hearing on our budget, and at the end of the night, approve our budget. And, and so, you know, I'm just asking for that consideration, just a couple of days' worth of time, and I'm really looking forward to taking a final vote on this issue on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanna take a time to really thank and appreciate interim CEO Heather Johnson, who has been a great friend and great ally to me, to my work. She has been exceptional for her work, in my experience working with her. So, we just, just wanna let you know that we really appreciate your work you have done. Wish you could've stayed longer, but, you know, good luck to you, and thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'm gonna ask that we call the roll on the motion to move forward without recommendation, though I can see we have support to make a decision today. Let's try to bring everybody along and come together by Thursday. So, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Wonsley.
Aye.
Rainville.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Chugtai.
Aye.
Kosky.
Aye.
Chowdhury.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Chair Palmasano.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you for everybody's time here in this room. We're gonna move on to our next item, which is the After Action Review update, and I'll allow just a minute for people who wanna transition in or out of the room to do so, and call up interim Director Gorman. I think that's about the quietest transition I've ever seen. Item number three is an update on the progress of an improvement plan following the 2020 Civil Unrest After Action Report. Before us is Director Brian Gorman, Office of Emergency Management, to give a presentation on this item. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmembers, Brian Gorman, interim Director of Emergency Management. With me today, I have Deputy Chief Clampy and Director Bergstrom to give you our Q3 and Q4 update on the planning for the 2020 Civil Unrest Action Report. The agenda for today follows what you've kinda seen here before. I'll do a real brief overview of the project itself, and then we'll delve into the two main components of it, the NIMS reset project, which Emergency Management is coordinating, and then we'll dig into the department-level projects that DC Clampy and Director Bergstrom will report out on. Just a quick refresher where we've kind of been. We started these, this project back in March of 2022. We've done quarterly reports since then, this one being hopefully our second-to-last report. We'll hopefully do one more here, first quarter next year, where we can report out on the completion of this project. Our overall report, we've, we've taken some items here on enterprise level. Our NIMS reset, which takes a look at our commanding coordination system and did retraining, re-exercising on those items to build our capacity here to respond to instances. And then, the rest of the projects were divvied out at a department level that were specific to their respective items. So, we'll go into the NIMS reset project here first. The NIMS reset project takes on ten of these findings from the report, along with six recommendations. Our objectives here, pretty much again, to demonstrate a capability that we can use NIMS in the coordination and command system part of it. So, we're just here to retrain everybody on the pieces and parts, along with exercises so we can demonstrate that capability. Update a timeline. Everything seems to be progressing on this part of the project as we had planned. A few things have moved here and there, but overall, again, we were planning to try to get this done by Q1 of next year, which we are on, on pace to do. Q2, we finished up our training, which I believe Director Lane had reported out on, and had moved us into kind of the next phase of the project, which is our exercises. So, we had seven exercises planned out. Five of those we completed here in Q3 and up to this point in Q4. We have one more, our Incident Command EOC, Emergency Operations Center interface, which is scheduled for later this week. We'll complete that one. And then the last one we'll have here in the series is our multi-agency coordination group, which we would hope to get it in in November, but we needed a little extra time. So, we will get that completed here by mid-January of next year. All of that work is culminating here in our capstone exercise, which we have scheduled for March of next year. This'll be a four-day exercise. FEMA has invited us out to Emmitsburg, Maryland, to their Emergency Management Institute to complete the course. It's a rigorous course, full of, of activities and exercises that test participants on their knowledge of NIMS and the incident management system. So, we are excited. I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to get out there and demonstrate what we've learned on a national stage. So, next steps for this, kinda as I had highlighted, we have two more exercises here. We'll get completed here in the next forty-five days or so, and then we'll continue our planning for our capstone exercise here for, for March of next year. Our scorecard, as we had highlighted here, the seven remaining recommendations that are left open, at least up to this presentation today. DC Clampy will be next here and can report out on PD's progress in those, and then Director Bergstrom is here to do the last two for the OCS communications plans. DC Clampy.
Thank you. Welcome, Deputy Chief Clampy.
Thank you so much. I'm Deputy Chief Travis Clampy with the Police Department, overseeing the Constitutional Policing Bureau. From our scorecard, you can see the list of things with community conversations being added to us at some point between the last time this was reported out and now. One big piece we'd like to highlight is the NIMS ICS training. This was a huge task for the Police Department to get everybody trained in this. We are nearly completely trained. As a matter of fact, I eagerly signed up to go to one of these three-day classes before I forgot I had something important to be at this afternoon, reporting out on this very topic. So, we're very proud of this, to be able to have everybody nearly trained by Q1. That will be taken care of. The new piece I talked about is the community conversations, and as part of our community engagement this summer and fall, we did that where we allowed for that open dialogue with the communities, and I, I feel that this is something that, while hopefully we cross off and call it completed, that's not gonna end for us. As we continue to go forward with our community engagement, this will always be a topic that we're going to talk about. Number three, that constructive conversation piece, this is really something we've put into practice for many years. We formalized it by talking to Charlotte Mecklesburg about how they do it, but this is essentially the, the idea that if you have an issue, like a protest or something coming up in the community, we try and reach out to the organizers and have those conversations ahead of time so that we all can work on the same page to the extent possible. So, that's something, again, we're just gonna formalize in writing and be able to cross off of the to-do list. The next piece is the workforce analysis and leadership training. As you can imagine, anytime you're dealing with new leaders, it's always important to have that level of development. And so, we've crossed many of these things off, but we're gonna continue moving forward, including bringing the FBI's Leadership Enforcement, or Law Enforcement Executive Development classes, hopefully to Minneapolis later this year. We're working with HR on a supervisor training curriculum, not to mention, kinda reviving one that we had in place for our new supervisors. And then one thing that we did very deliberately with Chief O'Hara is, he asked all of us, "Who's gonna take your place?" And so, not only did he do that with the reorganization that brought in his new leadership team, but we're constantly being asked to keep that in mind as we develop new leaders for the future. One piece here that's still left undone, that we're wrapping up with, with Public Works, is figuring out if we were to have this level of civil unrest again, how are we going to protect our vital infrastructure, buildings like City Hall, Water Works, police precincts? We are hopefully in the final phases of getting that on paper and finalized, so by Q1, that will be off our list. And then finally, a real big one, and I know Chair Palmasano, I know this is- And then finally, a real big one, and I know Chair Palmasano, I know this is a big thing for you with the employee wellness. You've worked with MPD on this. You know, on top of bringing in the mental health services and the Wellness App, we are currently getting ready to open up that hiring for our Health and Wellness Manager for the Police Department. It's going through the job specs with HR. And we're hoping, even by the end of the year, we can get that thing posted and get a manager into that position, because it is vitally important to have that one person directing all the health and wellness for the Police Department. I will turn it over to Director Bergstrom.
Thank you. Welcome Director Bergstrom.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano, councilmembers. Really happy to be here today. My name is Greta Bergstrom. I am the city's Communications Director. And I'm here to report on the progress and really the completion of the two recommendations from the after-action report that were placed in the Communications Department's realm. These are both related to comprehensive public information plan that would guide incidents, complex incidents, crisis situations, and really matters of public trust and public reputation. Upfront, I would like to thank a few people. I wanna thank former Emergency Management Director Barrett Lane, who is no longer here with the city, but he has worked long and hard and has really supported and participated in the, the development of this crisis communications plan, including authoring the first section, the Crisis Management Plan, which is really an underpinning to the, the broader plan itself. I'd like to thank interim City Operations Officer Heather Johnston for her support, her involvement, and her review and edits to the document and to the plan. I'd like to thank broadly MCR leadership and staff who continue to help support and provide guidance for the work and who also provide leadership within the JIC, in the Community Relations Section, in charge really of language, access, translations, interpretations, which is really critical to the communication of information to our community members. And I would really like to thank the city's Social Media Officer and Digital Communications Coordinator, Jordan Gilgenbeck, who is in my department for countless hours of research, development, and aggregation of data. Jordan has really gone above and beyond in helping me, in helping our department, and helping the city really put this plan together. It has been a team effort. It will continue to need to be a team effort through trainings, through active use of the plan as we move forward, and for all facets of the city, from the council to the mayor's office to the Office of Community Safety, Office of Public Service, to utilize this plan. The first recommendation, recommendation thirteen is a crisis communications plan. So the city should develop a citywide plan and response guide with instructions on responding to various scenarios. The first is we've spent over five hundred hours in trainings, NIMS compliant trainings. These are complete, ICS 100 through 800. And that includes not only communication staff within the Communications Department, but communication staff embedded in other departments around, around the city. The JIC, or just Functional Exercise, was completed at the end of October. There are upcoming trainings, including the Emergency Management Course at Emmitsburg in March that we will be participating in as well, to make sure that this works and actually we are ready, should the need arise. And then, of course, the broader plan here, it is robust. It is over a hundred pages. It is developed to be accessible. It is developed to be usable. It is developed so different, there's nine sections. They can be pulled out separately. There are, you know, it is a usable, we don't want it to live on a shelf. We want people to actually use the plan and be able to use it if they just drop in and, and, you know, have the ability to pick up and go. The overall objectives of the plan are to provide roles and guidelines when responding to a crisis, to ensure the city is the first and the best source of timely, accurate information, to build public trust and confidence. We want to make sure that the, the public is confident in our release of public information, that we are transparent in doing that. We want consistent communications, singular messages that everybody in the enterprise can amplify. And to establish clear communications protocols with our stakeholder partners. There are nine sections of this plan. The first section is crisis management. And again, former Director Lane authored that through Emergency Management. Crisis Communications and Public Information. There is a section, number three, on Critical Incidents. This section does need some additional work. We have some new partners, the new Commissioner Barnett in the Office of Community Safety, and they will be providing some additional updates. I will also say that that section would speak specifically to Critical Incidents as outlined in the city settlement agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. So that's kind of its own standalone section to be in compliance. There are response guides, strategies. We've got checklists, worksheets that can be used. Again, it's a usable living document that will be updated as well. And there is a color-coded risk assessment analysis that really provides a sense of all the different types of crises, critical incidents, complex incidents that could befall the city of Minneapolis, and provides a way of scaling those out in terms of likelihood that they might occur, and then magnitude of the impact or the crisis. And so I think that's something that is also very usable. Recommendation twenty-one largely is, falls within that section three, which is the release of public information under a critical incident. And so again, speaking to the city settlement agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, making sure that that section is compliant. But with that, I can stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. We have a question or comment from councilmember Payne.
Thank you, Vice President Palmasano. Yeah, I was wondering, for our crisis communications partner, Tunheim, what's the scope of their services? Is it to help us develop our framework for crisis communication? Or are they active responders in crisis? And I'm wondering, what are the limits of what's defined as a crisis in that scenario?
Sure. Chair Palmasano, councilmember Payne. Tunheim was brought on late last year as a crisis communications resource for the city of Minneapolis. We have utilized Tunheim early on in some sessions to help lay the groundwork for this plan and to help us think through scenarios and think through the new structure, to some degree, at the city of Minneapolis. They have also, on occasion, we've had different situations in, within departments where we've needed some additional capacity and some additional expertise in a particular situation. And so they have come on board in, in those certain situations to help, largely for capacity.
How formal is that? Is it just send a quick email and they'll hop on? Or do you have to do some formal scoping before they'll start?
So they're at the ready. Typically, what would happen would be there, there would be some agreement that the need for additional services is necessary. And the department under which, you know, might carry the budget, for instance, you know, that could be CPED, that could be Public Works, that could be another department, would pay for those, the City Attorney's Office, for instance, would pay for some of those services. And, but it's, it's usually a collaborative, collaborative effort with the Communications Department, the department who the sponsoring work is originating out of, for instance, City Attorney's Office, for those services and help.
So then does communications hold the contract? And then if a department needs to tap that capacity, is it kind of like a shared resource IT cost-sharing arrangement? Or is it one master contract with communications, and they just bill their hours?
Yeah. Chair Palmasano, councilmember Payne, it is a, a master contract that the city Communications Department, we do own that. We are the contract holder. But that does allow other departments within the city who have a need for communications, crisis communication services, kind of above and beyond our capacity at that time. And sometimes we, we are handling every day different situations, but we've had some special needs. And so then there is, they are charged. That department would be charged back for the services.
Okay. I might wanna follow up with you with maybe some more specific questions offline, but thank you.
Thank you.
And then I had some questions for DC Clampy.
Sure thing. Go ahead.
I was wondering, and it looks like, you know, some of the efforts you're doing around, like the community conversations are starting to get incorporated into the after-action report. I know the report was originally produced long before we had come to a final settlement with MDHR. We know we have an upcoming DOJ coming through. We know a lot of the actions or the work plan against the after-action report is really training-heavy. And I'm just curious how you're thinking about incorporating the, whether training requirements from the MDHR settlement agreement or the, you know, soon consent decree with DOJ? How, how are you thinking about integrating all of those bodies of work?
Chair, councilmember. When you take a look at, you know, one of the things we have to do, like we talk about our use-of-force policy, we had to host a number of community engagement sessions to elicit specific community feedback. And so we take those and as we mold our policy, which then we have to put back out for additional feedback before it's finalized, once that's done, then we're able to put it into our training, which has to be approved, as you know, by the state and by the independent evaluator, who will be brought on board next year. So I think it's really taking those comments we get with what we need to put in that policy and then, you know, molding that into the training and making that truly baking it into the training. So I think that's where the integration happens with those things.
So you see, whether it's the after-action required training or the MDHR or the consent decree, would you see as one integrated training plan? Or do you see those as kind of more parallel and separate?
Chair, councilmember, you know, it really, there's a portion of both. I, I, I think it's like a Venn diagram. You're gonna have that part in the middle that really, that molds together that you're gonna have to train on that. But there are also separate things that you can, you know, have their own lane for. So the answer to your question is, yeah, both, really. So, and it really, yeah, it, again, there's a part that intersects and the part that's independent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments in queue. Director Gorman, you're standing up. Do you have any final words? All right. So seeing no further discussion, thank you for this update. It's really important. We've committed that we would publicly follow up on all of these pieces and parts. So I'll ask the clerk to file that report. Thank you. And we'll move on to item number four. Item number four is receiving and filing a report in response to a legislative directive requesting initial analysis and considerations for converting Nicollet Mall into a pedestrian plaza. We have us, with us here today Kathleen Mayel from the Public Works Department to present to us on this item. Welcome, and thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Chair Palmasano and committee members. My name is Kathleen Mayel. I am a Transportation Planning Supervisor in the Public Works Department. And I'm happy to be reporting back on this legislative directive as we are in the early stages of exploring the potential. All right, that's a little bit awkward. The legislative directive put before us to look at taking transit off Nicollet Mall and converting Nicollet Mall into a pedestrian plaza. This legislative directive was given in October, and we have been at work collaborating with our colleagues from Metro Transit on the implications of what this would mean since then. There are two major elements to consider when thinking about the idea of making Nicollet Mall a pedestrian plaza. One relates to the transit service that currently exists on Nicollet Mall, which is very robust. It's a long legacy of, as a transit mall within Minneapolis. And thinking about questions around where does transit move to? And how do we support that transit service on new routes? And how do we deliver a quality of transit service that is just as good, if not better, for the residents of Minneapolis and people visiting? The second part is focused on Nicollet Mall itself and how we work to make that a vibrant public plaza, looking at things like the limits of the plaza and what sort of design, operational, or programming changes we would make to Nicollet Mall to create the platform for vibrancy, you know, people gathering, all of the things that we would wanna see from going forward with this, this change. I'm gonna call on my colleague here, Kyle O'Donnell Burrows from Metro Transit, who's been partnering with us to talk through some of the transit implications.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here today, and thank you to Kathleen for, and all of the city for your collaboration with us on this, on this project. So as we're all aware, today Nicollet Mall is one of the most important transit corridors in our region, bringing thousands of people to downtown every day. It's the principal north-south transit corridor in downtown, served by five routes, three of which are on the high-frequency network with service every fifteen minutes or better. It is also currently part of the planned alignment of the upcoming Metro F-line arterial BRT corridor serving northeast Minneapolis along Central Avenue and University Avenue, as well as the future Nicollet, Nicollet arterial BRT corridor serving south Minneapolis via Nicollet, Nicollet Avenue. Like the A-line, C-line, and D-line, these future corridors will provide fast, frequent service, reliable service with more comfortable shelters, including heat, light, real-time arrival information, and off-board fare payment. Bear with me on that then. So as of course we're all aware, Nicollet Mall today is a transit mall. It has dedicated lanes for buses, comfortable passenger waiting facilities, simple, easy-to-understand route design, close access to major destinations, and convenient connections to the east-west transit service through downtown, including the C-line and D-line and light rail services. Speaking to its importance within our transit network and within the overall structure of our transportation network, there are more than six hundred bus trips per day along Nicollet Mall, which is about twice as many as any other corridor in our region, with about nearly, excuse me, nearly eleven thousand ons and offs occurring along the mall each day, and about forty-two hundred to fifty, fifty-seven hundred people kinda moving along or through the mall by, via transit today. Obviously, consideration of moving transit off of the mall raises several key questions. And Metro Transit staff and city Minneapolis staff have been working very closely together to define those questions and then to begin to answer those questions. Those include thinking about where would existing local bus service move? Where would our future BRT, planned BRT service move, as well as stations move to? As Kathleen mentioned, how do we ensure that transit service remains as good or better for transit riders on Nicollet Mall today? That includes thinking about both the transit network and routing decisions, as well as thinking about improvements to streets that receive, that would receive transit if, if it were to move off of the mall. What types of roadway improvements would be needed to accommodate that space? And then as well, thinking about timeline for these changes, considering both those potential needed street improvements, as well as other planned major transit projects that are underway in our region. At this point, working with city of Minneapolis staff, Metro Transit and the city have identified four alternative corridors that were under consideration right now as alternatives if transit were to move off of the mall. Those are shown here on this map. You can see Hennepin Avenue, Marquette and Second, that, that street, that pair operating on the Mark II Express Corridor, Third Avenue, and Fourth and Fifth Avenues. The city and Metro Transit staff are working very closely together to identify which of these alternatives to Nicollet Mall would provide as good or better of an experience for transit riders as Nicollet, as Nicollet Mall does today. We're considering a number of factors, including, but, you know, not limited to thinking about the legibility of the service, directness of service, speed and reliability improvements of the transit service along any corridor through downtown, connections to other east-west transit service through, that operate through downtown, access to key destinations in town, in downtown, space for future BRT stations, and then the customer experience, as well as perceptions of, of, of safety. With that, I'll turn it back over to Kathleen for the rest.
Thanks. I tried to get a little technical help. Sorry for the not flipping through the right way. Regarding Nicollet Mall as a public plaza, there are some baseline assumptions that we would make moving forward with this. We would remain, Nicollet Mall would remain open to people walking, biking, taking different micro-mobility options. Emergency access would remain on Nicollet Mall. We would assume that the baseline newly reconstructed Nicollet Mall as of 2017 would by and large stay in place. There would be smaller scale design interventions that would both augment the, the ability for people to stay and linger and limit vehicle access, additional greening perhaps. So these are some of the exploratory things also that we're thinking through. In terms of programming, there's, the options for this are really limitless, depending on the partnerships that would come into effect with this. Different downtown stakeholders and organizations that already do programming on Nicollet Mall, expanding upon things like the farmer's market and such. Also, a nice opportunity to think about consolidating different events that happen downtown, such as different parades and so on, races that they would consistently occur on Nicollet Mall, that would be less disruptions toward transit service across the downtown core and more legible for all those visitors in downtown when those different events do occur. And now a few pieces on stakeholder engagement. This is largely a forthcoming effort, as we are just at the beginning of exploring some of it and getting our grounding from a technical perspective about what it would mean to reroute transit off of Nicollet Mall. And there really are distinct parts of this engagement process that we see. One is how do we talk about and get ideas and be in conversation around Nicollet Mall as a public plaza? And then there's another side of that, which is the transit component, and there are multiple angles there, both in terms of the local service and where that might go, and the BRT alignment for the planned F Line and future Nicollet BRT. We would look to, you know, inform riders clearly of any changes of routing, but also discuss and, and go through a design process for any underlying street improvements that would be associated with transit moving off of Nicollet Mall onto other downtown corridors. And there's a whole suite of stakeholders that we would engage, and there has been some initial conversations with the mayor's office as well, but just building upon different downtown organizations, residents, commuters and so on, as well as transit riders being an important part of the engagement that would be forthcoming. Looking at the timeline of when these different activities are happening, there's a key milestone that we are working toward, and this is an April 2024 decision point where we would understand where the F Line would be routed, if not on Nicollet Mall. This relates to Metro Transit's, their, their Small Starts Federal Transit Administration reporting requirements that they have for the F Line. And so that's an annual benchmark, and so making decisions that would change the existing F Line plans and be committing to another alignment is a really key deadline that we're hoping to, to meet, and that would require mutual understanding between both the City of Minneapolis and Metro Transit to where the F Lines routed and then what underlying improvements on that corridor would also be in the works for the future. So concluding, you know, we're at the, we're at the kind of beginning stages of the technical work, digging into the tech, or we're digging into the technical work, beginning stages of engagement, ongoing coordination with our colleagues at Metro Transit and that key April decision point on the horizon as we continue engaging with different stakeholders in the early parts of 2024. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have on this effort.
Thank you. I see a few people in queue. First is Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Mail and Mr. Burrows, thank you so much for this great report, and it's a great start. I just want to tell you both, I'm looking you both in the eye here, this is really important to have this discussion as a city. Our downtown is struggling, and perhaps, just maybe, perhaps this is one way to help bring our downtown back to vitality. So thank you for the update. I look forward to ongoing discussions and perhaps I might have a conversation with you privately, so, but thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for your report. I do have a couple of more specific questions, since this has been something that's been discussed on and off for 25 years. So let me first start by saying the mayor's Downtown Vibrant Storefronts Initiative called out removing buses on Nicollet Mall as a primary strategy. So I'm pretty confident where the mayor is at on this, thus the administration. Just want to point that out. Two, when we redid Nicollet Mall, we took all the buses off the mall because of the redo of Nicollet Mall, and the world didn't come to an end. In fact, people found different places and no one had to walk more than one block because buses were moved to Marquette and Second in one direction, some of them to Hennepin. And at that time, the Metropolitan Council told us that they committed to putting only hybrid buses on the mall. And they also said that the mall would have less buses than the other routes. I'm wondering, do you know the answer to if there are hybrid buses on the mall as the primary bus system? And two, how we go from having a transit, dedicated transit lanes on Marquette and Second, removing parking, taking out curb cuts, making it more difficult for people to get to their own things there for the purpose of having a dedicated transit mall on Marquette and Second, and yet there are more buses now on Hennepin than ever, on Nicollet than ever before? So how is that inconsistent with what we've been told in years past? Because first we were told we can't do it because we'd have to pay back the federal government. So then we got a legal opinion about that and we're told that was wrong. Then we were told by Metro Transit, we're going to have hybrid buses. I'm going to guess it's not only hybrid buses. Then we were told, but we need Marquette and Second. That's going to be our transit mall, and now there's more buses on Nicollet than there are on Marquette and Second combined. So it seems like there's a bit of stonewalling here on behalf of the Metropolitan Council and Metro Transit on this issue, and I'm wondering how we're going to break through that.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Council Chair Palmasano, I'm going to call up Adam Harrington from Metro Transit, who can speak to both the hybrid and I think the numbers as well on Mark II.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, council member. I appreciate the question, and of course, we have had a lot of history on trying to figure out the best place for transit in downtown Minneapolis. And back in 2008, when we arrived at our Access Minneapolis Plan for where all those routes would go, part of that scenario was moving buses off of Third Avenue, moving them over to Marquette and Second, moving express buses off of Nicollet, putting all the express buses on Marquette and Second. And at that time, we were pushing through 100 bus trips an hour in the rush hour, really needed that facility to help make that happen. Well, since 2020 and all the travel patterns have changed, you're right, there's a lot less service on Mark II right now as we work to get that market back, get commuters coming back to downtown Minneapolis, which we want. And the number of buses on Nicollet Mall is almost back to where it was in 2019, so there's a lot more trips today when you compare those two, but it's not as much as it was in 2019. As it relates to hybrid electric buses, when we first got our order of 100 electric, hybrid electric buses, we did commit to operate them on Nicollet Mall, and we have been. And so those buses are all there, it's just that that's not covering all the trips that we operate on Nicollet Mall. So we've got other ultra-low sulfur diesel buses operating on the mall as well as those hybrid electric buses. And now we're looking towards different technology and testing electric buses as, as we've seen. So it's true, there are fewer trips on Mark II today than on Nicollet Mall, and that's due to the market largely. We're hoping to have that come back. And part of our evaluation with our partners at the City of Minneapolis is to really understand what the push and pull is of where could transit go, where, where do those advantages lie, where are customers going, where are the destinations in downtown? So those are all the things we're hoping to address as part of the study, working with the city.
Thank you. We hope that it will get back to the way it was as well, but there are no cities in the country that have the kind of businesses coming to their central, workers through businesses coming to their central business district anymore. So if we just sit and wait and hope that they'll come back, we will be in for a very rude awakening. And now there is capability to move to Marquette and Second, and I just don't understand why we wouldn't almost immediately be thinking that through, because we won't have hardly anyone coming back if we can't revitalize Nicollet Mall. That's just the bottom line. Nicollet Mall is Maine in Maine, and if we just can't have that, if that doesn't turn into something different, then we have even less chance, in my opinion, of that. So I, I'm just curious about, we had heard Metro Transit was interested in this, but it doesn't sound really like you are. So can you just share with me the level of interest for Metro Transit in doing this? Or do we need to go to the legislature? What do we need to do if Metro Transit says, no, they're not going to do it?
Madam Chair, council member, we are absolutely committed to evaluating these options and taking it very seriously, and I'll say we've got a really good partnership with staff. And so part of this is that community engagement with not only our partners in downtown at the business level, but also our customers, and understanding where that balances between the options, as Mr. Burrows presented earlier on the map. So we absolutely are committed to giving a fair evaluation of this in partnership with the city.
Can, maybe I should ask, I don't know who in the administration can give me a sense of the hierarchy of this. Thank you, Mr. Harrington, you probably are not the person. Who gets to make the ultimate decision about whether or not buses go on Nicollet Mall or Marquette and Second? Is that the city, or is that Metro Transit through the power of the state? Because we just had our two transportation chairs here, and if I had thought we were going to get this much pushback, I would have asked them to stay for this conversation.
Madam Chair, council member, I hope this isn't viewed as pushback on the idea. We're really taking it through a process. I understand the view of it may seem obvious when you look at what's happening on the streets today, but the council does have statutory authority to operate on any street in the City of Minneapolis or in the region, except for Minneapolis parkways, without approval.
So we would have to get a state law change in order to direct the outcome that we would prefer?
Madam Chair, council member, I really hope that that is not necessary at all, and I just will vouch for our true partnership in trying to evaluate what the options are, and we're not ready here today to say what we're going to be doing because we're in the middle of that analysis right now.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I get that. I also just want to ask staff to please consider, when you're talking about the engagement of stakeholders, that there are four neighborhoods downtown, not one. Loring Park has a big chunk of Nicollet Mall in, in the Loring Park neighborhood, as does the Elliott Park neighborhood and the North Loop neighborhood, and I see on this list of engagement, none of the other neighborhoods are included, so I just want to, no blame, I'm just saying please include them. I'm quite sure that people who live south end of Nicollet Mall, who have seen the greatest reduction in business workers, greatest reduction in restaurants, greatest reduction in property values, greatest reduction in rejuvenation of downtown, would have very strong feelings about increasing the ability for restaurants and other entertainment venues to be closer to them. And, and they're not on this list, so just I'd ask you kindly to include that.
Councilmember Goodman, Chair Palmasano, absolutely. My fault they're not on the slide, absolutely. We haven't done the engagement yet. We would, we will absolutely engage with all residents of downtown and the neighborhoods surrounding. It's an important corridor for the residents, an important corridor for the transit riders as well, and we'll be, we'll be doing all of that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the report. Thank you for turning it around so quickly. I think we weren't sure if our legislative directive was going to get us anything back by the end of the year, and we're very grateful for that, so thank you.
Thank you. I want to just add that I hope that as we continue this conversation in public, I was struggling, and though I think this last part of the conversation gave me some context for that, for this, is that what, what problem are we solving here in this initiative? And, and what have we learned from the past iterations of Nicollet Mall? And those are just, those aren't questions to answer right now, right here, but I'm, I'm getting the sense that the problems that we're solving or the opportunity here is to really showcase this corridor, that it's about rejuvenization, that it's about an opportunity for revitalization in a different way than it can be having large buses on it. If it's more than that, I hope that my colleagues can maybe illustrate that for me. The question that I do have, though, that's pertinent for this moment, is do you have plans yet on how you will do that engagement work so that we can invite people to participate?
Council Chair Palmasano, at the moment, we don't have the engagement strategy outlined. We do know, we've been focusing on some of the technical work to date, with the intent that certainly between the new year and April, there will be some engagement, and we will certainly share that information and ask for the help of the council to help encourage engaging with our residents and getting the word out.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else in queue, so I will say, I'll ask the clerk to please file that report, and thank you, thank you Kyle for coming from Metro Transit for this conversation. Moving on, our fifth and final item before we move on to our committee reports is receiving and filing an update in regards to 3,000 Minnehaha Avenue. That's our former Third Precinct building, and to provide recommendations for preferred uses of non-city program space. I think that actually this is a presentation being given about the future and the use study of 3,000 Minnehaha. So I'll turn it over to Matt Hannon.
Thank you. Chair Palmasano, members of the committee, my name is Matt Hannon with Finance Property Services. I'm going to get started with the first portion of the presentation on the potential reuse of the 3,000 Minnehaha site, and Alexander Kato will take over later on in the presentation to talk about the engagement process there. So this presentation will go through the process that Property Services used to evaluate potential reuse options for the 3,000 Minnehaha Avenue site. In the interest of being fiscally responsible, Property Services first looks at ways to reuse existing city-owned property before selling. City ordinance outlines the process that the city must follow for property that is excess and no longer needed for municipal operations or service. Before any unused city property can be declared as excess, we must first determine potential needs and evaluate options for reuse. If no reuse options are identified and the property is declared as excess, there's a disposition policy in place for selling municipal operations property. The following slides show the criteria used to review the potential city needs and to determine possible reuse options for the site. This slide shows the general location of the site. The site generally referred to as 3,000 Minnehaha is comprised of two parcels separated by a public alley. 3,000 Minnehaha is the northernmost parcel that fronts Lake Street, Snelling Avenue and Minnehaha Avenue. 3033 Snelling Avenue only fronts on Snelling Avenue. 3,000 Minnehaha is an irregularly shaped parcel consisting of about .8 acres. There's a three-story shell building on the site that's approximately 40,000 square feet. In its current configuration, the parking lot has 48 spaces, and the parcel is Zone CM4, or Community Mixed Use. 3033 Snelling is a surface parking lot, approximately .65 acres in size. There are currently no buildings on the site. The parking lot has 86 parking spaces, and the parcel is Zone CM3, or Community Mixed Use. This slide is a summary of the overall site attributes. The combined size of both parcels is about one and a half acres, or 64,000 square feet. Three-level shell building on the site, again, as mentioned, is about 40,000 square feet. And overall, there are 134 parking spaces between the two parcels. Site access is available from Lake Street, Snelling Avenue and the alley on the site, but the site's currently only accessed from the alley. Given the recent events in and around this location, redevelopment on this site is a sensitive subject to Minneapolis residents. Earlier this year, City Council passed Action 2023A-0492, which affects the future use of the site for any police-related functions. As part of this process, we considered the existing site attributes and council action regarding future use. We reviewed the projects in the capital budget request list in our existing leased spaces to see if we could find potential candidates for reuse of the 3,000 Minnehaha Avenue site. After reviewing the list of proposed capital budget requests, we were able to identify five as potential options for relocation to the 3,000 Minnehaha site. These include Public Works Traffic Facility, the Farmer's Market. Public Works traffic facility, the farmer's market, animal care and control, the proposed Hiawatha training facility, and a water, relocated Water East Yard. We also looked at our current lease space portfolio to see if any of these functions might into the, fit into this space as well. Our general practice has been to move away from lease space into city-owned facilities wherever possible to minimize financial impact. Many of these leases are location-specific, or serve a particular purpose like storage that's not in line with this property classification. After reviewing the various lease spaces, only the election and voter services lease was determined to be a potential option. After that, we evaluated which of these potential reuses would be allowed at the 3,000 Mini Haha site under both the old zoning code and the 2040 land use rezoning plan. The zoning of the 3,000 Mini Haha site is C3A under the old code, or CM3, CM4, under the 2040 plan. The Water East Yard and Border Avenue maintenance facilities would not be permitted at this location under either zoning code, and the MAC facility or the Animal Care and Control facility would be allowed under the old code, but not the 2040 plan. Zoning requirements eliminate two of the potential uses, and depending on, on the fate of the 2040 plan, a third, Animal Care and Control, might also be eliminated. This leaves just the farmer's market, the Hiawatha Training Facility, and Election and Voter Services as more likely candidates based on zoning. In the next few slides, we'll look at some of the characteristics of these existing sites, as well as some of the pros and cons in moving these functions to the Mini, 3,000 Mini Haha site. The farmer's market property is an approximately two-acre site. There are three metal canopies that span the width of the property, but no enclosed structures on the site. There are 170 vendor stalls on the property, and the current configuration contains 23 parking spaces on the south side, not counting vendor parking throughout the site. There's been increasing demand for an indoor market space to better serve residents year-round, and there's a current CIP plan for enclosed structures for the farmer's market on this existing Some of the advantages to relocating the farmer's market to 3,000 Mini Haha are that the existing parking lot would provide plenty of parking. It's convenient to light rail and other public transportation. Disadvantages, there's abundant fresh food sources available near the 3,000 Mini Haha site already. The site is smaller than the existing farmer's market, and it would require major renovation or demolition. Minneapolis Animal Care and Control is located at 1705 Second Street North. Property is used for both nuisance animal housing, as well as pet adoption. The current site is approximately .8 acres. There's a one-story building that contains approximately 21,000 square feet. A master planning effort is currently underway to assist Animal Care and Control with determining options to expand the building by 10,000 square feet. There's a need to separate the pet adoption site from the nuisance animal holding area. Some advantages to relocating Animal Care and Control, the existing building is large enough to allow for both pet adoption and animal holding area, and additional space could be available for potential multi-use partnership there. Disadvantages include that the 2040 land use plan, as mentioned earlier, doesn't allow for the use on the site, and the site is larger than needed for a standalone adoption center. Elections and Voter Services is currently located at a leased building at 980 East Hennepin. The operation is divided between two adjacent buildings on the site, and there are three different leased spaces. The leases for all three spaces terminate on November 30, 2029. The largest space is currently at a rate that's substantially below market, but would return to market rate if the lease is extended beyond 2029. The combined building area that Elections is using is approximately 25,000 square feet. There are 52 designated parking spaces available during election times, but otherwise, there's a large open lot shared by tenants and guests of the building. Election and Voter Services is currently looking at ways to consolidate all of their functions into one space. Advantages to relocating Elections to 3,000 Mini Haha include, it's, again, convenient to light rail and public transportation, plenty of existing parking between the two parcels, existing building has adequate space for Election and Voter Services needs, would eliminate approximately $376,000 in annual lease cost, and again, that lease would escalate going beyond 2029, and it could provide flexible space for potential multi-use partnership. Disadvantages for this are that the cost for construction would need to be added to a future-year CIP program, and the remaining lease would need to be bought outdoor, taken over for use by another city department. Based on the proposed design work, the Hiawatha Training Facility would require approximately 1.4 acres of land to accommodate the 34,000-square-foot building and 64 parking spaces. The space would primarily be training and conference room, and there's also a proposal for open meeting space for community use as well. Some advantages to relocating the Hiawatha Training Facility, proposed Training Facility, again, it would be convenient to light rail and public transportation. Existing site and building meet the proposed design size requirements, be in close proximity to other public works locations, including the existing Hiawatha facility, and again, potential for multi-use partnership for additional space. Disadvantages of this are that it would be disconnected from the existing Hiawatha campus. When we take all these factors into consideration, there are at least two potential reuse options for the 3,000 Mini Haha Avenue site. Based on our evaluation, the city does have space needs that this property would be able to fulfill. Based on our evaluation of the site and the current city needs, Property Services recommends that the 3,000 Mini Haha Avenue site be repurposed for Elections and Voter Services. Locating Elections and Voter Services at 3,000 Mini Haha would make their services more This slide just illustrates some of the services that Elections and Voter Services provides. The existing building would meet the needs of Elections and Voter Services, and additional space would be available for community use. Also, during non-election times, other portions of the space could potentially be made available for community use or use by other city departments. The next step would include conducting a fit plan for Elections Services, which would result in a clearer understanding of the programmable community space. Early space estimates forecast approximately 8,000 to 10,000 square feet for community programming, and this represents about 25% of the available space in that building. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Alexander to talk a little bit about the engagement process.
Should we hold questions until the end, then?
This is the last slide.
Okay. Let's go through it all, and then we'll go to questions. Thank you.
Sorry. So, thank you, Matt, for going over the, the process that Finance and Property Services went through. This would also be included, would be an engagement process. On January 24, we're planning to do an engagement event to share this information that was presented to you all with community, to give them a chance to answer questions and better understand the process. And we'd also, at that point, outline the community engagement process for the spring. The, and then we'd report back to Kyle in March to, to refine that process. The engagement process in the spring and the summer would be monthly meetings to design that community space. As my colleague Matt mentioned, about a quarter of the building would be open for community input and design. We'd like to go through that process, explore the options, and kind of figure out how that space would marry with the, the primary use of the building. There'd also be an opportunity to explore just kind of the entrance, artistic elements, how the, the history of, of that building and the murder of George Floyd is memorialized within that building and entrances. And then in the fall would be a final report to deliver to City Council. That is the conclusion of this presentation. More than willing to take questions from the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne.
Thank you, Vice President Palmasano. I, I first want to acknowledge that today, this isn't the city making a decision. This is the city presenting information around a, a framework for getting to a decision, right? And then the second thing I want to acknowledge is, if we were to make this decision today, there are a series of financial, legal, land use constraints that thereby arrive us at certain uses over others. In this case, you're recommending the use of, not you, Mr. Cato, but the city is recommending the, the use for Elections Services. I'm curious, maybe this would be a question better for COO Johnston, as we're looking at the current landscape around the constraints, whether it's our capital improvement plan, our, you know, Property Services policies, what are some of the bigger levers that we would want to look at as council, as we're thinking about potential uses for this building? Because one of the discussions we had during our briefing was, the community engagement was going to be around the program space for the community, but because of the constraints of our, our policies, Voter Services was rising to the top as one of the best uses for this asset. If the community felt that there was a different thing that they would want to see, but our policies are a barrier, what, what kind of, what are the biggest barriers? Is it zoning? Is it our capital planning? Is it our ordinance specifying city uses of buildings? Because we actually have the ability to change those constraints if our community demands it.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnston.
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Payne, that, the answer to that is, it depends. I mean, if you, for example, you couldn't now have the city, a city-owned facility and have private uses in there, that would violate the public purpose doctrine, and that's state statute. That's not something in, within the council's power to change. So what we have done is, we have looked at the existing ordinance, the existing zoning, as you heard, both, you know, both comprehensive plans, and some, some of that is currently in doubt. I would imagine that you would want to balance all of the different pieces. I mean, one constraint, I think some folks would say is financial. I mean, this is obviously something where, you know, reuse, we look at reuse of existing facilities and getting out of rental space because it both balances the financial, the financial obligations of the city, and saves the taxpayers' money. That would be better, or I shouldn't say better spent, would, could be spent on other program activities that the council would be, would prefer. And so in terms of other constraints, certainly there, there's the balancing that you, the council, has to do on all different pieces of that. So, I mean, those are some of them. I could, I know you all have another meeting at 6:05, so I won't sit here and say all of them, but those are some of the major ones, in my opinion.
But the key takeaway here is, some of these constraints are within our control, but some of them aren't within our control.
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Payne, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Vice President. Interim, you could stay up at the platform. I got a couple of questions. So, first question I know that I get from my constituents a lot is, when can we expect to see the fences be, actually, this might be for Director O'Brien, too. When we can expect to see site cleanup, that includes removal of fences. I know that's come up in some of our briefings before. I thought it was also included in the timeline, maybe a previous update, but just wanted to get an estimate. I, I thought that was happening spring of next year, but wanted to get clarification.
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Wonsley, thank you for the question. I'll answer it, and if you want more details, the answer is spring of next year. So we are currently working on that. Director O'Brien is doing that, and so as soon as this, we hope to start working, not, we're starting work now, but hope to have that done when the snow is gone. So, in the spring. So, spring is amorphous.
Spring of 2024.
Correct.
Sounds good. And then, next question I raised, this is in my briefing, too, but can you lay out, is there any legal prohibitions around selling the site to a, a private developer, or basically, yeah, is there a pathway to sell this independently?
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Wonsley, you would have to go through the normal procurement processes. You would probably want to do an RFP process. We would follow our normal development processes that are consistent with our ordinances and our, with respect to zoning, as well as other considerations in your comprehensive plan that you all have adopted.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just had a quick question about the Community Benefits Work Group, and, because that's my understanding, too, is that we are adopting the formation of that. Could you just?
Actually, we're not. So after more discussion, as staff presented and gave those briefings to all of us as colleagues, there wasn't a lot of agreement as to how that would form or what that would take place, which is why, and Alexander Cato can share more, that at this point, we're not sure what that next step looks like. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're doing engagement in January to, to share this information publicly. Right now, we're leaning towards, for the spring and summer, having monthly community, community design meetings to find that space, a quarter of the building, but at, at this moment, we're not recommending a work group.
Okay. Thank you. I did see the receiving filing, and I got a little confused because I thought that we, there was a recommendation of how the work group was going to be, you know, formed, and I'm grateful to hear that we're just taking a pause and continuing those conversations. So that's all. That's great. Thanks.
I think that, Mr. Cato, I think that if I'm not mistaken, hopefully, when we're ready to have those conversations, we would have a better sense of the scope of that space that we can make available. Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I believe shortly after this, Finance and Property Services is going to be performing a fit plan on the building with the identified primary use. It'll give us a better sense of what remaining space we have. Right now, we're estimating a quarter of the building, 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. But yeah, you are correct with that statement.
Thank you. Council President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I initially thought I was after Councilmember Chavez, but, you know, I was just going to make the comment, I mean, I know there's a lot of interest in this space, but the idea of a Center for Democracy seems really intriguing, to have our elections and civic engagement, and particularly in a community that many times sees very low voter turnout, et cetera. So just wanted to add that thought.
Thank you.
Thank you for the recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Just to be clear, the council hasn't given direction that we are asking for this to be an Election and Voter Services area. There isn't anything being moved or forwarded with this presentation. And I guess it's for COO Johnston, a question for you that I have as well. I think my concern is that after today, we got a presentation, and then somehow, there's going to be designs, some direction that the mayor might be having, or be giving you to move forward on some type of Election and Voter Services, even if the council hasn't given direction. So I'm kind of confused. If you can clarify, what are the next steps?
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Chavez, the next step is to have a public meeting in January to help educate the public on any of our process that we followed, and what the recommendations are with respect to the primary use, and to begin that engagement process with respect to secondary uses. And so, in terms of direction, we've been given direction to present this information to you all today, so that's what we are doing. This is not, as I've said before, this is not a process, normally, this, this happens behind the scenes. As you heard, given, given the history of the site, we wanted to make sure that we were fully transparent for the public, so that they understand that, what the options are, including the benefits of having the Elections and Voter Services at this site. So.
Okay.
Thank you. So, just to clarify, council doesn't give permission to take this action or not. This is a property disposition process, and so we won't be taking a vote on that decision, ever. There will obviously be oversight kinds of things that come to committee as we invest more money in the re- more money in the reopening of this property. Council President Jenkins.
Well, thank you. I was just, I'm looking at a timeline, and I thought that was the timeline for engagement, et cetera. Is that accurate?
Mr. Cato.
Correct. This is the timeline we are proposing, and we're using the January event to share this information, come back to committee of the whole in March of '24 before we proceed with that work. But the timeline you see on the screen is the proposed engagement timeline for this body of work.
Great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Chair Paul Masano. To be clear, I mean, this isn't just a random situation. The Minneapolis Police Department murdered a black man, so this isn't just a regular circumstance that we're sitting here today. I think the reality is that we're, feels like we're being told that 75% of this building is being used for election and voter services, and that the council has no authority, authority over that. That is not true. We are the power of the purse, and we have the ability to amend the ordinance that is telling us that we're going to use the majority of this building for election and voter services. So, I just reject that premise to begin with. I think that we need to do engagement, real authentic engagement in this process, not say, what are you going to use these 25% of the building for? And I think this is going to be something this body is going to have to work on to make sure that the use of this building is actually something that the community wants. The community has not asked that they want this for election and voter services, to be clear. They just have not. That's not something they're asking for, and we need to dive deep into what people actually want, what city service potentially they want in that corner, and then what community use is going to be to the benefit of the people there. So, just saying, we need to take action on this, but it's not going to become election and voter services unless the community wants that.
Okay. Just to be clear, though, this is a receive and file action today. We're not taking action on anything today. But the engagement next steps timeline slide, just again to clarify, is about the engagement on the extra community use portion of this facility, not on the part that would be needed for another city function. Councilmember Chawertie.
Thank you, Chair. In our briefing, we had a discussion, our briefing on the site, there was a discussion about, yeah, typically, the city council would not even get a briefing on the use of a site, right? And that's an acknowledgement that this is extraordinary circumstance. We are talking about a building where we saw immense devastation and trauma in our community from many different perspectives, and we are talking about shifting it into a different use, and it is really incumbent on me, coming to this dais and talking to my community, that when we look back at our city's history and the history of the murder of George Floyd is detailed, the history of the building burning, the history of police officers standing atop the building and shooting projectiles is discussed, the history of everything that follows is laid out. We are also going to read the history of what the building became and how the community was a part of that, and I really want us to be on the right side of history on that one. And so, while I do understand that we usually don't get briefings on such matters and we don't get to participate, this is a very different circumstance, and it's an opportunity for us as a city to really do the right thing here and figure out how we can collaborate with community and empower their voice in what this process looks like. I was taking a look at the race equity impact analysis that's required in all RCAs that are brought to the city request for actions that are brought forward to the city council, and they're, on the, in community engagement portion, involve and consult were checked off, but collaborate and empower were not checked off. And I think in our briefing, there was a short discussion that community was somewhat engaged in determining, in determining the voter and election services. I didn't get full clarity on what that engagement looked like, that there were some discussions with community groups, was there not? I thought there was a discussion with our Longfellow Community Council. No? Okay. Well, for me, I would really like to see that, the crux of the issue for me as a council member that is representing the 3rd precinct is, many community members in my ward described to me that there was an expectation that they would be involved in a discussion around what the primary function of this building would be, and in January, we were presenting them with the primary function without their voice being a part of it. I'm glad to see that there is going to be some part of it that will belong to the community, but I think we are potentially not setting ourselves up for success to do the right thing here if we are coming to the community with an idea already baked for the primary function, and I would be really remiss if I didn't make these comments here today as we're getting this presentation on 3,000 Minnehaha and sharing it with our colleagues here on the dais that don't represent the 3rd precinct. I just thought I would bring that perspective and voice of community members here that I've heard.
Thank you. Are there any other people that would like to ask a question or provide comment? I'm not seeing any. I'll go ahead and direct the clerk to please file this report. Last but not least, we have the reports from standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council this Thursday. I think we can probably breeze through these, and everybody can go and read the committee reports. It was an unusually busy cycle, as is typical to the last cycle of a term. We'll go ahead and begin with the Budget Committee chaired by Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Budget Committee is bringing two items to the Thursday's council meeting. Number one is COVID employee leave program extension, and number two is 2024 appointed, nonrepresented, and politically appointed employees' salary schedules. I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Next is the Business Inspections Housing and Zoning Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
The Biz Committee is bringing forward 31 items, just so everyone knows. Item number one is the consent of the mayor's nomination of Eric Hansen. Item two is approving an application for extended hours for McDonald's in Dinkytown. Item three is for the huge theater. Item four is for the Kenwood. Item five is for Gia. Item six is for Berlin, and item seven is for Bina's. These are all liquor-related expansion of premise or sidewalk cafes. Item number eight is the Tiff Plan for 3030 Nicollet. Council President will be happy to hear that, as will be Councilmember Chectite, which is in her ward. Item number nine is an interim use permit at Malcolm Yards. Item 10 is the Body Art Ordinance. Item 11 is a Pedicab Ordinance. Item 12 is variance appeal. Item 13 is findings for nuisance conditions. Item 14 are liquor license approvals. 15 are the renewals. 16 are the gambling license approvals. 17 are the Spring Brownfield Grants from the Met Council. 18 is a grant application for employment and training. 19 is appointments to the Workforce Development Board. 20 is a legislative directive regarding labor standards enforcement. 21 is the deadline, a deadline extension for a forgivable loan. Item 22 is a legislative director on the TNC minimum compensation models. 23 is the housing advisory committee appointments. 24 is the public housing appointments. 25 are about $10 million worth of grants under the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Item 26 is a reservation of our low-income housing tax credits. Item 27 has to do with the regulation of tobacco. You might have been getting some emails about this. Item 13 is a window cleaning ordinance. 29 is rental dwelling pre-leasing ordinance. This is the work from Councilmember Wonsley after the issues at the identity at Dinkytown. And item 13 is granting in part and denying in part variances at 5,005 Lyndale Avenue South. And item 31 are the Great Streets Program funding awards. I'm happy to answer questions on any of those items. I do realize there are a lot. Took two meetings over two days to get through all the items.
Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I'll be bringing an amendment forward on Thursday to the tobacco ordinance. I'm trying to work for a one-year extension with sampling based on all of the emails and the concerns that we've got from folks. So that'll come forward on Thursday.
Thank you. Anything else about Biz Committee? I'm not seeing any Policy and Government Oversight Committee chaired by Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee is bringing forward 36 items. I read the full list at committee, and I'll be reading the full list in detail at the, at the full council, but I'll sort of take us through. Item number one is a gift acceptance. Item number two is a HUD Community Project Funding Grant Application and Acceptance for North Commons Park Improvement Project. Item number three is approving Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee appointments. Items four through 29 are, you know, our various bids and, and contract authorizations, most of it for either road construction or software updates. Item number 30, sorry, is a legal settlement. Kenesha Gilma versus the City of Minneapolis and John Vinck. 31 is a legal settlement. Yalima Argüello versus the City of Minneapolis. 32, 33, 34, and 35 are workers' compensation claims, three of which were forwarded without recommendation. And then item number six is a master contract in, for climate energy and sustainability services, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any. Next, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward 19 items. Item one is the passage of an ordinance amending provisions related to the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. Item two is the passage of an ordinance removing stigmatizing language from the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to high-risk sexual conduct. Item three is approving appointments to the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council. Item four is accepting a grant to address regional drug threats. Item five is accepting a National Forensic Sciences Improvement Grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. Item six is accepting a community-oriented policing services hiring grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. Item seven is authorizing an amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement with the Minnesota BCA for Human Trafficking Investigations Crime Analyst Support. Item eight is authorizing a contract with the City of Crystal for traffic enforcement for the State's Towards Zero Death Program. Item nine is accepting a grant from the Office of Justice Programs for a student internship program with the Police Department. Item 10 is accepting a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant for hazmat training and incidence response. Item 11 is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Division of Homeland Security to prepare for emergencies and disasters. Item 12 is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Division of Homeland Security to enhance emergency management capabilities. Item 13 is accepting the grant from the Medica Foundation for an anti-stigma campaign impiling on the site substance use disorder project. Item 14 is accepting a grand amendment from the Minnesota Department of Health for implementation of evidence-based family home visiting services. Item 15 is amending a previous council action related to contracts with organizations for the Partnership Engagement Fund. Item 16 is the passage of a resolution to support the formation of Longfellow Community Energy, Inc. Item 17 is a contract for service agreement with Hennepin County to respond to the social determinants of health. Item 18 is a food matters grant from the Natural Resources Defense Council to support creation of four videos for food waste prevention. And item 19 is a joint powers agreement between the City of Minneapolis, Special School District Number One, the Park and Recreation Board in Hennepin County, related to the Youth Coordinating Board. I'll stand for any questions on these items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll also just briefly mention that, unless you already have, I got pulled away here, that there might be, there will be some updates to that ordinance to come Thursday that is specifically about, I'm always going to get the name wrong, but the NRP Policy Board Ordinance Changes.
Yes.
And we just got that during this meeting in our email. So, happy to socialize that with others before the meeting on Thursday.
Yep. Thank you.
Next, we have Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Kosky.
I will, Madam Chair, I'll present this, this committee's report. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee is going to be bringing forward 14 items. I am sure that members will have a chance to go through the committee's report, and if you have any questions, either myself or Councilmember Kosky are happy to answer those. I will note, though, that item number 13, which was updates to the parking and mobility services fee and rate schedule, was sent forward without recommendation. The rest I will be moving for approval on Thursday, and happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Finally, we have the Audit Committee. We do have two items being brought forward from this week's Audit Committee, and it is simply directing the city clerk to transmit letters to the appropriate agencies within the state of Minnesota for our regular biennial body worn camera audits and license plate reader audits. Both of those will be going through as appropriate on Thursday. Are there any other items coming from committees that people want to make others aware of for Thursday? I'm not seeing any, so we've finally concluded all business to come before our last committee of the whole of this term. Thank you for your patience, and without any objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.